Thank you. It is our City Council Work Session of Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Apologize for the delay in holding the meeting. We had an extended executive session just before this, so we're all kind of trickling in here. Calling to order and notice to the public that City Council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
And Councilmember Shmoni.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember House, our mission statement, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Salas, our land acknowledgement, please.
I am honored to do so, Mr. Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
That takes us... Whoa. All right. That takes us to our general public participation, Agenda Item Number Four, starting with Rose Tohe, please. Hit the button. I don't think it's hot yet. There we go.
Stacy always saves the day. Good evening or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It is so good to see your faces here in person. I haven't seen you in a while, it seems like. So, shee'ya hi. I'll tell you my clans's, as it is protocol to do so. Shee' trachitni no da'anshni do, kenna chitni bashischin, ashka adzoi da'shinaldo, ashinida shetche, at a'edana astanenschla. So, those are my four clans's: my mom's clan, my dad's clan, and my paternal and my maternal grandfathers, who I said in that introduction. My name is Rose Tohe. I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives, and I just wanted to just let you know that our Indigenous Commission had planned a day for October 10th, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and this year we are going to honor the youth, the voices of our youth. I also sent you the information earlier, just a few minutes ago, anyway. But I just want to thank our staff who have helped in making this possible as well, working with me with the flyer. But I wanted to just give that attention to publicly is to join us virtually at 8:30 and 9 o'clock. Those are our virtual presentations, our opening, and also climate change in action with our young adults talking about their advocacy work and bringing awareness to this subject. We have a young lady from Mikaili Steen, a member of the Cherokee Nation, and she is currently pursuing her PhD candidacy at UC Berkeley. So, she's one of our speakers, and the other one will be Kaylee Avuzo. She's the net and a senior in NAU, currently the Indigenous Ambassador for Northern Arizona University. So, those are our two main speakers, our keynote speakers. And then at 11 o'clock in person will be the reflecting and honoring community, and that will consist of two youth panels, local students, talking about what is important to them and what are their concerns are, and also the contributions of indigenous nations in this area. Then we'll have lunch, and one of our commissioners, Fontoya, and also the owner of Hopi Studio, Simona Tutsi, they have planned the meal. And the other two are going to be cultural shares, where there will have two indigenous dance groups that will perform and also explain their regalia. So, I hope that you will be there to join us in the day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rose. Emma Schreiner?
Hello. My name is Emma Schreiner, and I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for a nonprofit called Rural Arizona Action and a member of the Flagstaff Abortion Alliance. But I'm here today as a living product of a life-saving abortion. About a year and a half before I was born, my mother went to the emergency room because she thought her appendix had burst. When they told her that she had actually been eight weeks into an ectopic pregnancy, and they saved her life and unblocked her tubes, she had no inkling that she was even pregnant. Under the 1864 territorial law which we now live under, doctors would likely find themselves huddled in a room with a legal team as my mother approached death, and neither of us might be alive today. When I was 21, I was violently raped by a partner, and in the wake of that horrific incident, I was too distraught to even think about Plan B or receiving care. Luckily, I was not pregnant as a result, but under this law, those who become pregnant as a result of rape or incest cannot legally terminate the pregnancy. The idea of being forced to carry a child under any circumstances should be enough to make every person take a stand. I can tell you that if I were forced to carry a fetus of my rapist to term, it would have been a death sentence for me. Today, I am 28 years old, relatively financially stable, and I have no interest in becoming a mother. I wish to birth ideas and solutions to problems like this one, and I want every other human being to be able to make that choice for themselves, too. Dear Council, standing up here and telling you all this is not easy, but I do this because I know that what we're asking you to do is not easy either. The right thing rarely is, but if I, a privileged white person, am terrified, imagine what those countless community members who do not have the resources to find a way to chart their reproductive destinies must be feeling. I'm here as a member of your community who loves this place and is willing to do whatever it takes to protect this community, but we need your help. Just as you bravely stood up to the state on the minimum wage increase, I'm asking you to do so here by committing to not use any taxpayer funds on prosecuting abortion seekers, providers, or helpers. I ask that you stand up for me, the nearly 20,000 NAU students who could become pregnant, the parents who aren't ready for more children, the children who want childhoods, literally all of them, the trans men who have other dreams than carrying a fetus to term, and all of those, especially Black and Brown people who are dealing with intersectional issues of racism, sexism, and inequality, and will not be able to find a way to chart their reproductive destinies under this law. I hope you will do this for yourselves. Be brave. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, Emma. Susan Shapiro?
Hello. My name is Susan Shapiro. I'm here again on behalf of Flagstaff Abortion Alliance. Since I was here before you last on August 23rd, the Pima County Superior Court has lifted the injunction on abortion, allowing the prestate abortion ban to become law. And as I'm sure you know, according to Attorney General Brnovich, nearly all abortions in Arizona are banned except to save life of the mother of the pregnant individual, while Doug Ducey's office asserts that the law criminalizing abortions after 15 weeks of pregnancy is in effect. The upshot of this confusion is that abortion providers in Arizona have stopped offering services. That doesn't mean that the need for abortion care has gone away. It just means that people who have an unwanted or nonviable pregnancy do not have access to health care. We appreciate the City Council's acceptance of our prior request to discuss protecting Flagstaff residents from possible arrest and prosecution for providing, accessing, or assisting with abortion services. However, to date, we have not been advised of any such resolution taking place. The stakes cannot possibly be higher in this moment, so we're here today to insist that urgent action be taken. As I explained last month, the City of Tucson has adopted a resolution that ensures no physical arrest will be made for alleged violation of Arizona abortion laws. I'd sent an email on that same day I was here, August 23rd, giving examples of measures taken by the City of Tucson as well as other cities across the country. So, today I've taken the liberty of printing out those resolutions of the City of Tucson, Boise, Idaho, City of New Orleans, and City of Texas, as well as my prior statement, because these measures not only addressed arrest and prosecution, they addressed surveillance, the provision of health care following people who might be seeking an abortion out of state, and coming after people like me and Emma who are doing our best to offer resource information because of the vacuum that now exists. I also want to let you know that I spoke this morning with the Vice Mayor's Office of Santa Cruz, Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz of the City Council of Tucson today. That office is very supportive of our work and our efforts, and I just want to offer that I'm quite sure that they would be a good contact for the City Council when pursuing this work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan.
Can I give this information?
Please give it to the deputy city clerk and pass that along. Thank you. With that, Andy Fernandez.
Okay, first of all, we need more transparency here because the lack of it is very appalling. You know, first of all, you know, you supposedly should name your name, where you live, all that other specific information. Like, if you've been here as a resident and you work here, and if it's a full-time, or if you just came in, you were sent by a CEO to do some kind of work here for a couple of months, get some things situated, maybe to finalize a scenario, to upgrade a scenario in any of the businesses in this area. But the scenario is also stipulate, like the young lady did before, she stipulated she was a student. I'm glad to hear that. Now, the scenario is here is, yeah, a few weeks ago, it was a very non-transparent scenario where you had this minimum wage scenario increase. And like I said, you know, I come four of the last five weeks. I wasn't able to come here one time because I had to be, I was in the hospital. So, that was unfortunate. But the scenario is, yeah, transparency. Like I said, I initiated back in 1998, putting the City Council Work Sessions at both East Flag and West Flag Library, and there were several people that were accessing it. I wasn't the only one, but I, you know, at the time, I had been candidate for office on a couple of occasions. You know, I ran for mayor here. I actually also ran for congressman, and I had access to all the information. And I seen, you know, sometimes they would say something here that was incorrect or was being stipulated differently, so therefore there was some conflict of interest going on. So, now with that said, again, as I stated several years ago with... Oh, I can't remember her name, but she's the one that initiated the minimum wage increase in the first place. This is why we're here again. I substantiated, adamantly substantiated that there was no need for a minimum wage increase, because when you increase the minimum wage, therefore you now have to increase the pay rate to your employee, and also, actually, the main thing is increasing the products and services cost. And therefore, that exacerbates the situation, makes it worse. And that's why we're in the same situation that we were just seven years ago. Now, we have a scenario that, that's why, again, adamantly stipulate, no, a minimum wage increase. It sounds so great, but it isn't. Now, another key scenario, again, transparency. I was having problems with my computer, so I went to the library, tried to access the City Council Meeting on a couple of occasions. They even had people there, and they tried to access it, and it was so difficult to facilitate. It was appalling. You know, before you go in, you go to the website, okay, on the left side, you have the little bar, City Council Meeting, boom, okay, or City agendas. You could go look at them, and immediately you get there. Here, you have to go through three or four different loops to try to get there. It's appalling. Yeah, so suffice to say, that's sometimes a scenario that needs to be addressed. Also, Doug Ducey, a year, seven months ago, passed a legislation to disallow parking or putting items on a public thoroughway. I had three incidents, and I called the police, and I told them, hey, this is what's going on, and you're not...
Thank you, Andy.
You start getting fined for that scenario as well. That's appalling. People are walking on their...
Thank you, Andy. All right. And we don't have anyone online at this time for general public participation, so we are on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Proclamation for Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day. Council, if you'd like to come to the front with me. You gotta have center speech, right? Frequent and repeated exposure to critical incidents can take a toll on law enforcement officers, often leading to significantly higher rates of mental health challenges or tragedies such as suicide. Law enforcement officers are more likely to die by suicide than in the line of duty. Blue Help reports nearly 200 known officer suicides per year. The City of Flagstaff recognizes that its first responders serve on the front lines, facing stressful and trauma-based situations daily that can impact their mental health. There are several barriers that prevent law enforcement officers from accessing mental health services, including shame and stigma. The City of Flagstaff recognizes the need to end silence surrounding law enforcement suicide and the urgent and ongoing need for prevention and awareness. City of Flagstaff supports first responder mental health services, and September 26th is now recognized each calendar year as National Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day and provides the opportunity to educate oneself about warning signs and how to best help those in need, because it is time to stop the stigma. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim September 26th, 2022, as Law Enforcement Suicide Awareness Day.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for acknowledging this, for the issue that it is. Even our small city like Flagstaff is not immune from the stigma and results of vicarious trauma. We've seen death by suicide here locally, and it is a national problem as well. Thankfully, the city has taken steps through our Employee Assistance Program to give us additional resources, and we have many state and local charities and advocacy groups that officers are available to reach out to. And our officers themselves are more in tune to it and believe in taking care of each other as well as our citizens. So, thank you for the proclamation. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may have a comment?
Yes, please.
I want to offer a moment of silence to remember officers Beckwith and Officer Shugart from members of our Flagstaff Police Department whom we lost in the last three and a half years.
Thank you. Everyone cup out their heads. Thank you, Councilmember Salas. We're down to Agenda Item Number Six, the Review of Draft Agenda for the October 4th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Council, any questions or comments regarding the draft agenda? All right, not seeing any at this time. We'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, which is the City Manager...
We do have a public participation card for Item Six.
Thank you. Andy Fernandez?
Okay, you need to put this sign here before you start counting on my time. Now, the scenario is, that's twice in a row, Paul. Yeah, you've ignored me. You have to have been reminded that I have a comment card. That's not looking too good for you. I mean, I campaigned for you twice, put radio ads for you, just like with Jim McCarthy. I mean, I put campaign signs from University Heights to Mobile Haven and Christmas Street for Jimmy. I'm done the last week, got him in. Now, the scenario is... You have a scenario for next week's meeting. You're asking for these comments. Now, you have restroom fees. $249,482. You also have another one for almost $2 million, and that's Item C for next week, under the AC. And then, Item 9A, open space. Look at about the purchase of open space, and that's all it states. You should state at least a minimum, specific location, how much acreage, and price. Instead of brisovie, evasive, the transparency is out the window again. And I have you right now on my Facebook, I'm campaigning for you. But you got, man, you're dropping the ball pretty seriously here. Wow, it's amazing. I mean, it's gotten worse every year. And actually, it was Eva Petsova was the City Council Member who initiated a minimum wage increase seven years ago, and I opposed from the get-go, and this is why we're in the, it's just we're having, not just here, but nationally. And then when the state came in and saying, Donald, you can't do that, well, you know, the city pushed back a couple of times, but then some things happened, you know, a little bit of money flowed, and they said, okay, well, $234 million, you get a little chunk of that, and you can get reinstated to that kind of funding. Yeah, that's a lot of networking there in that scenario, or it's called corruption. Now, the scenario is, again, there's several items on the agenda next week, and actually, you have them out today. This is amazing. Because like I said, you know, I've been here three times, out of four where the agendas weren't on the staff report scenario. And it used to be outside right before, on the staircase. That's where they should be. Like I said, you know, since I really haven't been coming COVID and a few things, and then I had some other scenarios going on, in the last four years, I really hadn't come in that much. You know, I had some medical issues of my own going on. So, the scenario is, oh, like I said, we need to get back to transparency. It's like, when you had, other people have campaigned for over the years here, manipulating scenarios. Oh, yeah, Susan, Sarah Presser, I campaigned for mayor. All of a sudden, four years later, she wants to go ahead and disallow putting campaign signs in certain locations.
Again, is this regarding our draft agenda for next week?
It's a scenario that needs to be put on the place on there as well, but we need to stop manipulating the scenarios and have the full staff. If nothing else, you know, they used to have full staff agendas right here on the table here, right where the police officers are in the back. So, I say, okay, I review this item, but it doesn't say much of the information. Can I ask you? And back in the day, you had a work session the Monday before, back in 1995, all the way through to 2012, and then they...
Thank you, Andy.
Addressed those issues the day before, and then Tuesday, you could reiterate it.
Thank you, Andy. We're down to Agenda Item Seven, City Manager Report. City Manager Clifton.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. This report has one item to call out for quick discussion, but I'll proceed with some updates from some of the other divisions. Just a few highlights. Oh, and we'll have monthly reports from City Engineering and Capital Projects, Economic Vitality, and then PROS. So, we have three monthlies to give you. The Fire Department responded to a large trash fire at the Waste Management Plant on Flag Ranch Road successfully. Community Risk Reduction and Fire Suppression Personnel were working to pre-plan the new building for Elara at the Sawmill location. Thank you for those efforts. And then, in the realm of community giving, the Fill the Boot Fundraising Event for Muscular Dystrophy has been occurring. Much appreciation for that. You had a nice update from Neil Chapman last time, so I'm not going to recap, but you can plan on continued updates from the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission, of which he is now a member. Congratulations to Fire Department personnel who were newly promoted to the rank of captain. Forgive me if I get the names wrong here. Colin Chalifor, Wesley Forbach, and Bob Oberle. Nice photos in your report. Congratulations, gentlemen. Police Department, also congratulations to Officers Ty Webster and Chris Wesley for their life-saving heroics in recognition of, or they received life-saving medals in recognition of their efforts in providing saving techniques, life-saving techniques, to an individual who was not breathing or showing signs, vital signs. She was successfully recovered from that, so congratulations to those two officers for the efforts. Public Works, I know this is of high interest. We are slowly getting caught up on the bulky trash operations. I know you'll be getting continued updates. I know we've been hearing from our community about this. Just want to impress upon everybody that it's a work in progress, and we're getting there, so stay tuned, please. And we apologize for the lateness in this. It's attributed largely to lack of staffing. Let's see. Downtown Business Alliance meeting on the 22nd. We enjoyed a nice presentation regarding the housing bond question. Also, a nice meeting at the Murdoch Center on the 20th to discuss things going on in the South Side neighborhood, including some bad parking behavior and some large parties. Stay tuned on that. It's definitely getting our attention as it frequently does this time of year, but there will be some follow-up dialogue and some ideas shared about these issues. We are grateful for the City Council Candidates Forum that occurred on the 21st. The division leaders did an excellent job of discussing their respective divisions. We chatted a bit about management stuff and thanked the candidates for their interest in serving, so I wanted to share that with you. We have an alliance meeting coming up on the 30th. Our leadership team had a very nice retreat on the 19th, very successful. Outcomes of that have already been mentioned in passing, but some very good outcomes, and stay tuned on that. We had a Library Director meet and greet on the 19th with three finalists. Thank you to Heidi Hansen for orchestrating that. We're in the process of making an offer to our new city engineer. We'll be making that announcement shortly. Our Water Services Director position, we held our last interview on the 23rd, and we'll be hosting a meet and greet a week from yesterday, Monday, October 3rd, here. I believe the time is at 3 o'clock. We'll continue to make public notice of that. Everybody's welcome. Now, for the call-out item, and then we'll get into some monthly reports. I appended to my report to you a letter from High Country Humane dated September 16th. The font is so small, I cannot read it to you, but I know what it says. It is asking for an appointment for a city liaison to serve on their board. I think this was discussed before, and I believe it's probably going to be embodied in the new contract that's being amended. We thought we'd bring this one back to council and see if there's interest. I think anybody from the city, whether elected officials or staff, you know, I think anybody's fair game for this. Actually, it would be quite an honor to serve on that board for any of us. So, I thought I would at least put it your way, and if there's any ideas floating around, otherwise, we can come back to you in the future on this. Thoughts?
Thank you, City Council. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only thought on it was, I agree that it would be definitely an honor, but because we're in the midst of election season, I don't know if we wanted to wait until that ended to verify who would be, if it was a member of council. Otherwise, I would be open to anyone who was interested in putting themselves forward for it.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Well, it may be best for a staff member to be put in this place, maybe even animal control, somebody who has the expertise in this area and doesn't reflect on the terms of the council members to create some continuity. of the council members to create some continuity in that representation. So if other councilmembers or a member of our police force that's been dealing with some of the negative externalities of animals in our community as well, I think somebody with expertise from staff would be ideal in this circumstance. And I'm seeing some nods at the heads for council, but if we can get some thumbs up, I think-
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do see thumbs up. Let us pursue that, and we'll report back to you as to who that individual is. I think it's a great suggestion.
Excellent.
Thank you. Okay. Onto the monthly reports, and thank you for that. As I mentioned, we have three of them. City engineering and capital projects is our lead batter. Jeff Baumann or somebody from city engineering, are you ready to talk about your monthly report? While we're waiting on that, let's go to economic vitality, and we'll circle back if that's okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, vice mayor, council members. Heidi Hansen, your interim deputy city manager and also economic vitality director. I'm gonna share my screen, Mayor, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Do you see, do you see a report up in front of you?
Yep, we see it.
Perfect. We have a lot of things going on, especially at the airport. I think that all of you are well aware that months ago, we hired airport communications manager Claire Harper, and she is really hit the ground running. We have tension fabric displays that have continued to be installed and actually renewed with advertising from different businesses. As you know, that is a revenue stream for, that we've, we are creating for the airport, which relieves the airport from general fund necessity in our future. So you'll see, we have Lowell Observatory to the right, we have NAU in the center. We've also installed some LC, LCD display TVs where we're going to have a variety of ways for people to advertise on the big screens in the hold room, upstairs while they're waiting, downstairs while they're waiting. We also had a very successful Thunder over Flagstaff event. We've been doing this event for quite a while, and we just had several people out and about at the airport learning about aviation. We have young aviators that are interested in flying, which we badly need. As you all know, we're having a national crisis with crews and pilots. We also continue to advertise the airport, letting people know why they should fly Flagstaff first. This is very important because we will be going to a conference in November, trying to get other air service. Our electric vehicle charging station went in, and this picture right here with this car is our very first vehicle that actually used the charging station. And so far, we're getting good response back. We also continue to do CARES program, CARES projects at the airport with the funding that we got, eighteen point one million dollars. And there's a lot of the fore and afters, striping that we've had to do. We've included new bike lanes, we have pavement markings, all sorts of things. There's going to be a lot more that you'll see as well. And there's also a decorative fence that has gone along the perimeter of the parking lot, which got, was able to get, we were able to get away with our, do away with our chain link fence that we had. And then, of course, our employment and total operations, they actually held strong. They weren't as good, of course, as last year, and that's because we have less flights going out right now. We still have United until the end of October, February. Beautification arts and science. We actually continue to do beautification action grants where people can apply for a grant and then get things accomplished. And here you see the Grand Canyon Youth Center was, had a little grant where they put stones and rock, and they put some vegetation. That's a nice project to share. Going back to the airport, we have the art piece that will be going in hopefully by Thanksgiving, the fencing that you will see that tells about our story of the airport. We call it the Coconutino Scroll. Just so you know, this is the brochure that we promised you that would be available at the airport for people to learn more about our story, and we'll also have an installation with the tension fabric. They also have the library entry project that they're doing, and they also have things that they're going to be doing with the Downtown Connection Center, and the list goes on, but there's a lot of different projects. And they're also working on the Lone Tree Overpass. And if you don't remember this, we've had a long-term plan on Route sixty-six that we've continued to beautify. We'll actually show you a lot of this before and afters as things continue to go on. Hope my scrolling is not making anybody sick. And then Park Flag, we have new team members. Heather France joined us, and we have a lot of others. We are fully staffed right now. And then we are taking care of the discussion on loading zones. If you see this yellow curb right here, it's showing the delivery trucks where they can load and unload because the alleyway is not always doable, so we're working on that as well. We continue to kiosk maintenance. We have tons of kiosks, over a hundred, that we have to maintain regularly, and everything that we were doing to install new software has been installed. Business attraction, we continue to work on different strategies. Bolski is close to being completely ready to go. And then we also continue to attend conferences, the AED conference. Then there's going to be one that's coming up in Prescott very soon, the Fall Forum right here. If you have any interest in going to that Fall Forum, please let me or Dave McIntyre know, we'll get you signed up. Business retention expansion, we continue to do the Innovate Waste Challenge, and we're working on that with sustainability. And then they also did an Arizona Tech Council tour, and I shared a little bit about this last month, but we had lots of participation from Catalyst Space Technologies, W.L. Gore and Associates, and the list goes on. We go into the library, there's a lot of good stats here, but I'm not going to go through all of those with you. We do have a book club. I was actually corrected, we have ten book clubs. So if you have any interest in participating in any of our book clubs, please let me know. We also have a lot of work that's happening over at the East Flag Community Library. And then we also have a lot of things going on with our digital literacy workshop that the library is happy to share with you as well. And last but not least, tourism and visitor services. For August, we actually had a really good month. We, our occupancy beat last year by four point three percent. Our average daily rate was just down slightly, but our RevPAR was up at three percent. So if you were in this industry, you know those are good figures. Marketing media relations, they did tons of things. As you can see, the list is super long. What we wanted you to know is we track everything. We track the average time someone stays on our discover Flagstaff dot com website. We track social media influencers, we track film permits, we track our email open rate, we track sweepstakes that we do, and the list goes on. So I hope at some point, if you haven't looked at this, you will. We also talked about how we hosted travel writer Marilyn Jones. These posts that we do gets people to, gets them to write about our destination, and that's what we're looking for. And then we also have, and this is always impressive to see, this highlighted list of stories that had something written about Flagstaff, and this is just for one month. And then we're going to look at film. Basically, we continue to work on this. Meg's showing herself right here when she presented to you last month about the film industry and where we're going to go with that and what we're working on. And we appreciate councilmember Aslan's participation. He will be attending a conference with Meg very soon, and we appreciate his interest as well. The website, we continue to have great analytics. Our domestic sessions were up by one point three two percent, which is not bad. And then we had our email campaign. We have our sweepstakes, we have our social media, and I just wanted to share, if you haven't seen this one to the right, it is really cool to have influencers come to the visitor center and recognize why Route sixty-six is so important to this community, and take a post like this and do something, and this thing just went viral. Our sales team, which is International Travel Trade, where they actually go internationally, they are actually going international again, which is amazing. They've been incredibly busy. Our meetings, conferences, and events has been doing very well, and just for the month of August, they did have one lead that turned into two hundred and eighty room nights, which is eighty-three thousand dollar direct impact. Visitor Services continue to do well. We are up, up, up in walk-ins and retail sales, which is terrific over last year. We continue to sponsor the First Friday Art Walk. We do our indigenous art market, and we are in construction on EV charging stations. And then last but not least here is creative services, which not only works for Discover Flagstaff, but the city as a whole, and they're continuing to develop really great material for our community. And they're talking about astrotourism this month, and they also talked about our festivals. They talked about our national parks, our state parks, and they also talk about our upcoming leafometer. So if people do not know this, if you want to be a leaf peeper and you want to see when the leaves are changing, or if someone says to you, when would be the best time to come up to Flagstaff to look at the leaves, just direct them to discover Flagstaff dot com, and that will tell them exactly by this leafometer, when is the best time to come and look at the leaves, and will actually give them all the locations of where they can take great pictures. If I don't have, if I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions, council? Councilmember Salas?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Heidi Hansen. I have a few questions and a comment. So let me see, how do I start? Let's go to the visitor center. I'm curious to know the schedule of the Native American market by the visitor's center. It says in the report that it's going to run through the summer. How about this fall and winter? Are we gonna have the Native American market by the visitor's center?
Mayor, councilmember Salas, I'm gonna have to check on that for you. I'm not sure if they're only doing it in our peak season or if they're gonna do it throughout the winter, but I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. And then, then the last one was Discover Flagstaff. When is the annual stakeholders and partners luncheon?
Well, Mayor, councilmember Salas, thank you so much for mentioning that. That is going to be on October twentieth. And we, if you have not signed up yet, we hope that you will sign up. It is definitely going to be from, I'm going to just check my calendar real quick. It is from eleven thirty to, just a second. It's eleven thirty to one. We do have a keynote speaker, and we would be more than happy to have you attend. If you, if you have not signed up, I really hope that you will, especially if you don't follow a lot of what we do in tourism and visitor services. You learn a great deal by coming to this luncheon, and we also talk about the economic vitality division as a whole. We will, we, we will update you on the airport. We will talk about the work that we've done in business attraction retention expansion, community investment as a whole, and we also talk about our library as well. So it's kind of a nice little celebration of how the division is done, but exact, but especially about where the tourism industry is and where it will continue to go. So I hope that you will, it is free, and all you have to do is reach out to me or Carrie Nelson, our administrative specialist, to participate.
One final comment and question, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Hansen. I understand we are in the process of hiring a new library director. I have very important, important information to share. Actually, this, this goes well with our workforce training, workforce development goal. Last week, I attended the Arizona World Coconutino Warforce Board, and there was a presentation by Google. Google is partnering with our local workforce board, which is here, which is our Coconutino Warforce Board, in introducing, launching Google Career Certificates. I think the library would be a perfect location, so I think this will be a great partnership that can happen between the city, the county, and the library, the library as the location, and of course, with the workforce dollars. This would be like at least a ten thousand dollar grant. The Google certificate is distributed to its scholarships focused on helping those from underrepresented and underserved communities and those economically disadvantaged. So it's, it's a ten-hour week, and in less than six months, the scholars will have hirable skills and five certificates. These include data analytics, digital marketing, and e-commerce, IT support, project management, and user experience design. So let's, let's, I hope to continue this conversation with Ms. Hansen, and I will link you to our, our executive director for our workforce, but see how we could kind of work together and bring this Google Career Certificate at our library.
Mayor, councilmember Salas, I will tell you, the library for the last three years has done something with Google, and I'm not sure if it's something different than what you're saying, but definitely I will take that information and make sure that the library puts themselves in for that.
Yes, this will be the next level, and we can have a role within, with the scholarships. So this, at the end of, of the program, the scholars will have certificates and hirable. And actually, the, the, Google is already working with a lot of companies who are ready to hire the certificate holders once they finish the course. And again, it's targeted to, to underserved, underrepresented, and economically disadvantaged members of our community. Thank you.
Sounds fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Salas, for bringing that up. Anything else? I think we're ready for our pros team now.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, Amy Hagan. Currently, today, Parks Manager and interim Recreation Manager. We may see an announcement on that soon unless Mr. Clifton's gonna trick me here. Okay, pros, monthly highlights. So we had a project highlight we wanted to share with the team regarding, we had our annual Aquaplex, our anniversary and a one-day membership drive. We set a goal with our coworkers of twenty-five thousand dollars. They exceeded that, absolutely blew our minds, so big congratulations to that team with getting a hundred fifty-seven new memberships and eighty-two renewals totaling a little over twenty-nine thousand dollars. It was an impressive day, so kudos to that team. We did a staff, staff spotlight, who is our open space supervisor. Some incredible information there on a lot of the work that Robert's done the last, he's been with open space, I believe, since twenty eighteen, and a lot of work that he does there on our three thousand acres of designated open space that he manages and programs quite a bit. So some incredible information on what Robert and what he brings to the team. On page two is a snapshot here on Parks. I'm gonna shrink this a touch for us. I know that starts to get a little small. So on a monthly snapshot, gather, we gather, the team gathers our trail counts. We have five locations along the urban trail system with trail counters. Every single month, the highest count is at the back of the Buffalo Park two-mile loop. It's at about the one and one-quarter mile marker, so it's someone that's definitely doing a full loop. We see over three hundred and thirty-eight daily passersby's, so without a doubt, we know this town walks, rain or shine, walks, ride, they pedal, they walk, they stroll, they do the whole bit on our urban trail system, but it's a really cool thing to have that tool. Showing a picture here, this is a hole eye on our Thorpe Disc Golf Course. So I didn't know if this group knows, but in twenty twenty-three, Flagstaff has been chosen to host the PDGA Masters Tournament. Will be here, really neat. So we've been working with the Flagstaff Disc Golf Club, and it's been a lot of their hard work, to be honest. They are redoing some of our holes, some of our tee pads. That shot was amazing to get with the rainbow in the background, but we're continuing to work over, we've been doing, partnering the last six months, and we will for the next eight to ten to prepare for this large event that will happen in the summer of twenty twenty-three here in Flagstaff. So that'll be utilizing, however, both of our city courses at McPherson and Thorpe, plus some with our partners at the county, and then for with Snow Bowl. Recreation, so some updates on recreation. They did a community collaboration with North Country Healthcare within their annual children's health fair. It was a big success. We host that at the Flagstaff Aquaplex, and it just starts to tie in that connection of wellness to all four of our recreation centers, not just the Aquaplex. And what, what that does is it enlightens our recreation team to continue to think of what those programming opportunities are for health- of what those programming opportunities are for health and wellness in the community. And it continues to educate the community on what's available at our four recreation centers. So that was a big push this past month. Circling back to open space outside of just the staff highlight, we have our Seeds of Stewardship. We're open space partners with the Arizona Trail Association. And they did work this last month, or during the month of September, with both fourth and fifth graders from Flagstaff Junior Academy regarding some education on native plants and invasive plants, and working on Macmillan Mesa and natural area. So it was a great opportunity for some of the youth of our community. And then we still host our Wednesday Weed Polls. Those are always a big success. And this last time, I believe the location was the Rio de Flag and Picture Canyon. So a lot of fun news going on in open space. Lastly, for the E that pulls in, pros, they've been working on some accessibility improvements with the community farmer's market on, or there's the community market on Sundays, creating some of those additional needs as defined with our accessible parking in the City Hall parking lot. So staff has partnered with the community market on that effort. And just, and just to toss out there, some September happenings that will be occurring. We will be kicking off with Flagstaff Art in the Park. That was this past Labor Day weekend. Working always with our partners with the Downtown Business Alliance on Activating Heritage Square, which the Downtown Business Alliance has been doing an amazing job with that, with our Friday Night Summer Concert Series, our Saturday Night Movies on the Square, and Sunday performances. And then some hilarious photos there where there was a Stormtroopers made in a special appearance, I believe, at the showing of a Star Wars film on a Saturday night downtown. That is a monthly quick snapshot of pros for the month of September. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, Council? Not seeing any at this time. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that concludes, I have heard from our engineers, they're all in in Rio de Flag meetings. So we'll catch that next time, if that's okay.
Perfectly fine. That's an important one. All right, and Agenda Item 7A is the Appointment of City Liaison to High Country Humane, but I believe we've already given proper direction on that. So we're down to Agenda Item 8. This is the update to the Brownfields Route 66 Coalition Revitalization Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Craig Zanetto, and I am the Administrative Specialist for the Community Investment Office. Stacy Breckler-Naggs, the Grants, Contracts, and Emergency Management Director, and I are the city representatives for the Northern Arizona Revitalization Program for the Route 66 Coalition. Our guest today is Dave Laney with Stanton Tech, and he will be giving an update about the current program, the benefits of Brownfields funding, and how we can help spread the word. It's my pleasure and my honor to introduce Dave Laney from Stanton.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm going to be talking today about what we're calling the Northern Arizona Property Revitalization Program. Some folks refer to this as the Brownfield Grant Program. A little bit of quick background. In 2012, City of Flagstaff was a leader in brownfield redevelopment in northern Arizona and had a $700,000 grant from US EPA to do this kind of work. This particular grant is actually awarded, has been awarded to Northern Arizona Council of Governments, but City of Flagstaff is one of the coalition members on this grant. So it's a continuation of a great tradition that the city started 10 years ago. The, the current grant is $600,000 in size. It was awarded in June of 2019, fully funded in October of 2019. Normally, these are three-year grants, but there's been a one-year no-cost extension. So it runs until September of 2023. As I said, this was awarded to Northern Arizona Council of Governments, but the coalition members include City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, City of Winslow, Town of Camp Verde, and Yavapai County. The nice thing about this grant is that it's 100% grant-funded. So there is no matching funds, there are no matching funds that were required. Also, both publicly owned and privately owned property can use these grant funds. And most importantly, from the perspective of many property owners, even though this is an EPA grant, this is not an enforcement program. So if you get an assessment with these grant funds, you don't get a letter in the mail, you don't get a knock on the door, you don't get a phone call saying, now you need to do something else. Basically, you get the information from the assessment, and then it's up to you as a property owner to decide what to do or not do, which is, which is very good as far as getting people to sign up. In a nutshell, this program identifies plans for and attempts to provide technical assistance and funding to property owners with blighted, vacant, underutilized, and in some cases contaminated property. The goal is to try to look at property that can improve economic development, encourage growth, and provide community benefits. You can see from this slide that the folks on the Route 66 Coalition include city managers and some fairly senior folks in each of the government organizations that are associated with the Coalition. And I think that just reflects the importance that each of the Coalition communities assigns to this grant and its success. What I'm going to talk about briefly is what kinds of properties are eligible for use of these grant funds, what kinds of activities the grant will pay for. And they give you a few examples of some of the successes that have already been realized since the current grant started in 2019. A brownfield, by definition, is any real property, the reuse, expansion, or redevelopment of which is complicated due to the presence or perceived presence of pollutants, hazardous substances, or contaminants. The key there is not the fact that contaminants or pollutants are mentioned in this definition, but that it recognizes that sometimes there's a perception of contamination, or there's a perception that there's something wrong with the property. And probably 70% of the properties that get assessed with this grant either have no contamination, or they have very low concentrations of contamination. What they do have, what all of them have in common, is a poor or poorly documented history of prior use. And if you know developers and you know investors, you know, banks, that's one of the things they hate. They don't want to know, they do want to know how much it's going to cost to buy a property or to invest in a property that they want to do something with. And so that's one of the great things about this grant is that it can provide documentation on properties that have been used previously as far as what they were 10, 20, 30, 50 years ago. If you know brownfields, you're probably familiar with some of the classic types, like old gas stations, old dry cleaners, old manufacturing facilities, auto repair facilities, things like that. But with this particular grant, we're also doing a lot of work on things like old schools, hospitals, churches, parking lots, strip malls, junkyards, old rail yards, a very wide variety of different types of property. If you know brownfields, you also know that one of the things that happens is the more brownfields you have, the more adversely it impacts your community. So these properties don't generate jobs, they don't generate tax revenue. They do contribute to blight and slum. They influence quality of life for all community members. And they result in disinvestment in many, many cases because investors and developers don't like to, to buy them, and they'll go to a different part of town or even a different community altogether. One of the, the things, if you're going to redevelop a brownfield that EPA has discovered, is that once even a dollar of this grant is invested in a brownfield, you get a lot of private investment that comes in. In fact, they have found with their 20 years' worth of data, because that's how long this program's been in the federal government, that for every dollar that's invested, up to $23 of private investment comes in for a brownfield property. So that's a great return on investment. Also, property values increased by 5% to 15%, not just on the brownfield, but on properties as far as four blocks away from every brownfield that gets redeveloped. So let me tell you a little bit about how the grant works. First, we do what's called a brownfield inventory. So we look at publicly available information that EPA has and that Arizona Department of Environmental Quality have, showing where there might be properties that have had some environmental issues or have had different kinds of operations that might have resulted in a release to the environment in the past. So things like properties that have underground storage tanks historically, or properties that have had an auto repair facility. Sometimes you'll also see facilities that have generated hazardous waste because they have to get a hazardous waste generator ID number. We take that information, we combine it with information on these properties from the county assessor, things like zoning, parcel size, land use, things like that. And we put them together in an inventory. When this particular grant started in 2019, we started on the inventory of all the communities in the Coalition fairly quickly. And during the summer of 2020, we finished that. And there were something on the order of 90 brownfield properties in Camp Verde, Coconino County, Cottonwood, Flagstaff, Prescott, and Sedona. Here are a few pictures just for Prescott of the types of properties that were on the inventory there. You can see there's a, a dry cleaner, a few office buildings. There's an old auto dealership. So, you know, properties that would have petroleum, metals, asbestos, and lead, probably. Lead-based paint. The second thing that we do is we do community outreach and engagement. This is probably the eighth public meeting that we've had to talk about this grant. There were a couple of online meetings. Because of COVID, we weren't holding public meetings for about a year after the grant was, was awarded. But we did have two of those. Then we had a public meeting here in Flagstaff and one in Prescott in September of last year. We've had public meetings with the NACOG Economic Development Committee. There was a Facebook Live event in Prescott. So we've, we've, we've tried to do a lot of community outreach whenever possible. NACOG also has a website that tells the public about the grant and provides examples of success stories on how the grant has worked in the past. So that's been good. And there's also a brownfield advisory committee, which consists of businesses, developers, real estate folks, and longtime residents in each of the Coalition communities. And they help to advise the Coalition on how to prioritize funding. The third thing that happens with this grant is there's a site nomination form. And if property owners are interested, they fill out this two-page form, and they send it in, it's very simple form. It just asks for the address, the property owner, what the site's currently being used for, what they want to use it for, and what, what their timing is on it. Because if you know banks and developers, you know, time is money. And they'd like to see something get done on properties pretty quickly. When we get the site nomination form, we fill out a form, a different form to fill in, to, to send into EPA and Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. EPA looks at sites that have, and properties that have hazardous substances like asbestos and lead. Arizona Department of Environmental Quality looks at properties that have petroleum, so old gas stations and auto repair facilities. What they're both looking for is, they want to make sure that whoever's applying for use of the grant funds is in also the party that may have put contamination on the property. So you won't see some of the major oil companies, for example, nominating their gas stations for this program. But if a mom-and-pop business came along and wanted to buy an old gas station, turn it into, say, a coffee shop, or a gift store, or something else, they absolutely would qualify. Once EPA and/or ADQ approve the properties, then we'll do one of three things. We'll do a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. We'll look at the history of the property and interview the property owner, look at all the old historical aerial photographs, the sandblown fire insurance maps, whatever else is out there. That typically costs between $3,000 and $5,000 and costs, and takes about a month. What we're looking for is recognized environmental conditions or conditions that would indicate a prior release to the environment. If we find those, then we can do a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, where we go out and we collect samples and we send it to a lab. That can cost anywhere between $10,000 up to $100,000, depending on the site, and take maybe three months to do. In both cases, the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment, for eligible property owners, they pay nothing. Costs zero, 100% is paid for with the grant. The third thing that we do with the grant funds is a regulated building material survey, where we go into old buildings, buildings built before 1980, and we look for asbestos and lead-based paint. Those can also be very pricey, you know, up to $50,000 in some cases. Just depends on how big the building is, how many samples you have to collect. But for eligible property owners, again, the cost is zero. 100% is paid for with the grant. Just to give you an idea of the diversity of some of the properties that have already enrolled in and gotten assessments through this grant, I've got a few pictures here. You can see we've got like old construction company lay-down yards. We've got an old restaurant. There's two old gas stations. Here, there's a Head Start School in Winslow. The Sunshine Rescue Mission here in Flagstaff actually got an assessment. You know, they've been running that, the mission and using that building, I think, since 1956, and never had an asbestos survey done on it. But once they got the survey, they were able to qualify for grant funding to, to take care of some of that asbestos. Here you see there's a museum, there's a high school. The City Hall in the city of Prescott got an assessment done. So there's, there's, like I said, quite a diversity here. The big picture is that to date of the $600,000, about 65% has been spent. That's over the last two and a half years. Probably 21, 22 properties have had assessments done, so that's better than one every two months. The Coalition members were meeting on a monthly basis, now they meet every quarter. But I mentioned inventories. So we're a total of seven different inventories, or, or inventories for seven different communities that were completed. There've been six brownfield advisory committee meetings, six public meetings. And I would say more than 50% of the properties that have been assessed have already been redeveloped and, and or sold and are being reused right now. Perhaps one of the most important things with this grant is that several of these properties, once they got an assessment, were able to leverage the funds that were spent and get money from private investors, from banks, and/or from other government agencies or entities other than EPA. Here's an example of one in Prescott. This was in escrow at the time the woman brought this to us. She was a real estate professional living in California. She realized she did not have any due diligence that had been done ahead of time. She realized she did not have any due diligence that had been done ahead of time, and she was worried about contamination on this property. About $7,500 of the grant was spent on this property to do a Phase I and regulated building materials survey. It was completed within a month, and she was able to go forward with purchase of the property without fear of having any sort of contamination that would mess up her long-term plans for development. Here's a property right here in Flagstaff, out on Highway 89, that was a former gas station. It was something that ADQ came along and removed the tanks 10 years ago. But with property, old data isn't necessarily good data. For one thing, the cleanup standards have changed in the last 10 years. For another, banks and other folks who might want to buy this property want something that's more current, in case things have changed over the last 10 years. And finally, ADQ didn't look at the building, so the owner didn't have anything as to whether there was asbestos or lead-based paint in here. So at a cost of about $38,000, which the owner paid nothing for, we were able to do a Phase I, Phase II, and a regulated building materials survey on this property. And now this owner is either going to sell the property or redevelop it. And here's one that everybody living in Flagstaff should be familiar with, which is the Downtown Connection Center. I actually worked on this back in 2010. This is a location where the railroad and public utility that burned sawdust to create electricity 90 years ago dug a big pit and filled it with creosote. The goal was to treat railroad ties and wooden utility poles. The problem was that they covered it up, didn't dig it out, just left it in place. It also happens to be right next to the Rio de Flag. So it created a couple of different problems. You can't do anything with the property to the west, because you don't know what's there. You can't do anything with the Rio de Flag to the east, in terms of channelizing it and reducing potential flooding. So the city, back in 2010, got money from EPA cleanup money to the tune of $150,000. And then last year, got a Phase I environmental site assessment to show that nothing had changed since 2010. But in 2010, the creosote pit was removed, and then last year, the Phase I. So the city used about $154,000 of EPA brownfield grant funding on this site. Fast forward to today, you know, plans call not only for channelizing the Rio de Flag, as you all know, but for tearing down this old warehouse and putting in a new transit center. And the figures that I have say that about $155 million worth of federal grants are going to be used for that development. So the city, in its wisdom, went and got $150,000, $154,000, and was able to leverage it to get $155 million from the feds. So this is a great success story that I talk about all over northern Arizona, every time I talk to people about these grants. So you all ought to be proud of that. Last thing I'd like to say is that none of this has happened without cooperation and publicity through word of mouth in communities like this. You know, we can do all the work we want to, to identify brownfields with our inventories, but those are only about 20% to 40% of all the properties that actually get assessed with these grants, assessed, cleaned up, and redeveloped. The rest of it comes from, you know, developers, bankers, real estate folks, and long-term residents hearing about the grant and either signing their property up for an assessment or talking to somebody that they know who has a property that might be good for an assessment and encouraging them to get involved. And since there is another year left in the grant, and there's $200,000, the coalition, the RIT-66 Coalition, wanted to make sure that we gave you all the message that this money's out there, so that anybody in the city of Flagstaff, any property owners that are out there, and the city itself, if the city has property, can apply for these funds and use them as effectively in the future as they've been used in the past. So, any questions? That's all I've got.
Thank you. I do have one question. Are we utilizing this for the old public works yard, potentially, to assess?
You know, there are two types of properties that cities often have that EPA will not approve. One is public work yard, and one are landfills.
Oh.
And city of Flagstaff-
That was my other suggestion.
-had a discussion, I believe, with EPA on both of those. And I wish it was otherwise, but that's kind of the situation. If you developed a public works yard, and you're the only one who operated it over the years, then EPA would say, well, if it's contaminated, who put the contamination there? Unfortunately, it would likely be the city. So that's one of the only cases of where city-owned property here in Flagstaff wouldn't be eligible. They also did, back with the original grant, I think the city wanted to check all of the buildings, all of the fire stations that the city owns for asbestos. And if you guys had purchased a building, or had been given a building, they said, that's fine. If you built the building and then, you know, 10 years later wanted to check it for asbestos because, for whatever reason, it didn't get checked when it was built, they said, no, we can't do that, sorry. But if there's asbestos there, you guys probably put it there. So that's, those are the exceptions-
Gotcha.
...that unfortunately don't allow cities to use this more. But there are a lot of cities that have gone out there and done things like, you know, picked up, you know, in St. John's, their city hall is in an old automobile dealership that they got brownfield money to clean up. And I know Springerville just moved their fire department into an old automobile dealership and got brownfield money to help renovate it and clean it up. So there are instances where cities definitely use these funds for something significant. But it's a great question. Unfortunately, I don't have a good answer.
No, no problem.
Or an answer that would be favorable to the city.
And you're saying that $200,000 of the $600,000 is still available, and we have, what, one year of availability?
Yes.
So this might be something we could run by local businesses, other entities that may have moved in to see.
Absolutely. And it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So as I tell, as I told Coquenino County earlier today, because I went and talked to the Board of Supervisors, if you want the money, then you should, you know, make everybody aware of the fact that it's available. Because if you guys don't take advantage of it, one of the other coalition members will. The little town of Camp Verde probably has used more of this money over the last two and a half years than anybody.
Gotcha.
And that's just because they go out there and talk to people every week.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a call for us to get the word out a little more from the council side of things. Councilmember House, then, and then councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I thank you for this presentation. It's eye-opening. It's amazing how problematic brownfields can be and the level of collaboration and commitment that is required in terms of cleaning them up. Obviously, the upsides to getting them cleaned up lift all boats and really benefit the community.
Yes.
So any way we can support this type of project and beef it up, I would love to see that happen. And I don't want to get into too much of a brainstorming session here, but I'm curious if that Giant gas station on Milton is something that's relevant to this conversation, or if that's a completely different track. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that. Or I invite you to specifically name other properties you're identifying in Flagstaff, just so it's on our radar and we can think about it more.
Yeah. I think the gas station you're talking about was in the inventory originally. So that was one that we had some discussions with city staff about, and offhand, I don't remember what the issue was there. You know, if it's still owned by Giant, for example, or if it were owned by Maverick or something like that, then it might not be eligible. But I'd be-
David's behind you.
I think I remember.
Okay, Dee.
My understanding is that we had identified that one as a potential, but it was already in escrow, and they'd already done a Phase I environmental assessment. So we came in just a little too late. That transaction got held up a little bit later, but not because of a Phase I environmental, they'd already done one. So we did, and just for your knowledge, we also had been to the Chamber and EKONA and various other business groups to try to get this word out over the last couple of years. We're going to continue doing that, but I wanted to make sure you knew. We're excited to have your help with that, and we're doing the same thing.
Great. And let me know offline what's going on with that Giant space right now. We can talk about it some other time.
Yeah.
There's some positive there.
And, you know, depending on what these guys say, we could very easily share the results of the inventory for Flagstaff with you all, because sometimes everybody knows the property, but only one person knows the owner well enough to approach them and say, hey, you know, you might think about signing up for this program. So there's still, even though we went over every single property that I think was in the inventory, I think there were a few that nobody really had good information on. So if you're interested, that's publicly available information. We certainly could share that with the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, thank you for your, for very educational and informative presentation. And I, for one, would volunteer in terms of reaching out to property owners or business owners based on your inventory of properties who are, who could potentially apply or may be eligible to obtain this grant. Because I was just thinking, I'm not like the old SCA tissue location, you said, you know, and then I can, of course, I have, like, just kind of these ideas of potential applicants to this grant. So I will be connecting with our community investment director. Yes, I got it right. Yes. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, are there any sort of limitations on what a property could be reused for under this program?
No. Sometimes people ask, are there any, other than the fact that, you know, someone who may have contributed to contamination on a property is not eligible, are there, is there anything else that EPA won't approve? They generally do not approve single-family residences. They have approved assessments on multifamily residences, and certainly commercial and industrial properties. But there's no limitation that I know of that they've placed on what a property can be reused for. And since NACOG is one of the, is the primary grant holder here, or the lead coalition member, they've had a lot of nonprofits that have, you know, not just the mission, the Sunshine Rescue Mission here in Flagstaff, but they've had different groups in other communities, one up in Page, one in Prescott, that have had homeless shelters, or women's shelters, or things like that, that have needed federal funding, but they have to get one of these Phase I environmental site assessments before HUD or somebody else will give them federal funds. They've had those folks sign up, and they've gotten a Phase I, and then they've gotten, in some cases, millions of dollars to actually put in a facility like that. So it's just all over the map. Some people want to get one of these properties and then put in a new business to make money, but in other cases, with a nonprofit, it may be something entirely different that they're thinking about. And we've just seen a whole range of different end uses. Yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all the information. We do have one public participant for this section, Andy Fernandez.
Okay, Andy Fernandez, yes, I ran for congressman here 12 years ago. I also ran for mayor for the city of Flagstaff. I'm also Army Corps engineer, born and raised in the city of Flagstaff. Now, this is a bunch of BS, I'm going to tell you right now. You have a scenario where the city has no business getting into the real estate business. Right now, have you been reading the headlines? The housing market is being decimated by these parasites. It's the realtors in collusion with the developers, and these people like these individuals who are using these facilitated scams that are manipulated by the legislator, so they can manipulate monies. This is appalling. You have a situation, you have back 16 years ago, you had the Ford Street, you had, right there were the North Country. And right down the street, the old East Black Theater, that one sold for $232,000 just four years prior. All of a sudden, the city buys that property over there where North Country is, not even half a million, almost a little over a quarter of a million they paid for it. They put up a for-sale sign, trying to sell it for $9.3 million. It stood vacant for 14 years. Finally, they put a sign that said, the city of Flagstaff will give this property to anybody who will come in and use it for a non-for-profit. That's when North Country came in. Now, we have scenarios with these non-for-profit lies, manipulators, because they're for profit, they're making money. Like I said, back in 1998, 1999, right here, right before I ran for congressman, I said, you have a situation where you have the Flagstaff Medical Center. At that time, you have a surgeon's making half a million, the average individual, their employee, making $68,000. Now, you have a situation with these affordable housing units? Okay, now, this is another, a lie. They use the Habitat for Humanity and HUD, and they give that great spiel, just like when they did with the, remember the bond? You weren't here back then, okay, 99, the bond for the schools, $34 million bond for the teachers' pay. The mayor and his wife, they got big fat raises. My buddy, Mr. Phipps, 10-year teacher, got $2 raise, while the other people in the high administrators, the mayor's wife, and the others, was getting $43 million and another, plus bonuses, plus vehicles, plus nice vacation homes and whatnot. Yeah, this is ridiculous. We are in a situation here where the housing market, when the city came up here and, you know, they gave them bills for six and a half, seven and a half months about the not-affordable housing scenario, and they said, wow, we found this property right up on Ford Street, on Third. If you go to the Maverick, right, that Chevron station, not the Maverick, the Chevron station, right next to it is that blue lot, that empty dirt lot, and right behind that, it's five townhouses. The city of Flagstaff in 1999 started construction on these so-called lies of affordable housing. You know what happened? That's, one person, that was a single person, got one of those houses. Another one was a female nurse, who was, again, over $65,000 a year. She leveraged that to buy her house in Country Club. Now, all these manipulations being facilitated inappropriately. Like I say, we have situations here where the real estate should not be a pawn in the political scheme, because you guys are just getting fat and rich.
Thank you, Andy.
And Mayor Coral, last time, she did that.
Thank you, Andy. With that, I'm not sending any further comments or questions from council, so we're going to take a 15-minute break and then come right back. Thank you. It is, so 4:55, it's 4:40 now.
Mayor, we are unmuted.
Excellent. Just holding this up here, my computer ran out of juice. All right, we are down to agenda item number nine. This is discussion regarding parklets.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Michelle McNulty, the planning director for the city of Flagstaff. I'm here to give a little overview on parklets, talk about their benefits for our community, and ask for direction from you on how to proceed with codifying them. So a parklet is a sidewalk extension that provides more space and amenities for people using the street. They're typically made by converting street parking spaces. If they're parallel, you might use about two or more. If they're angled, typically it's three to four. If they're angled, typically it's three to four. They're typically flush with the sidewalk at level, and they extend the width of the parking spaces. The first one was created in San Francisco in 2005 as part of Parking Day. Parking Day is celebrated annually across the globe, sorry, I take a breath, to temporarily repurpose street parking into public parks and social spaces to advocate for safer, greener, and more equitable streets for people. So here are a few examples of some parklets in Colorado. They have a really robust parklet program. We've looked a lot at their codes to see what they're doing. They also have a lot of companies that are actually designing amenities for parklets. There are a lot of benefits to the community. They increase public open space, create aesthetic enhancements, as well as provide amenities such as sidewalk extensions, as I spoke about. They provide seating or respite for people who are walking, plantings, and bicycle parking. They also provide an economic benefit to our community. They can serve as outdoor dining areas. This was especially important when social distancing was required. During COVID, some of our businesses were able to stay afloat because they were able to extend outside. Through that, we created Euro, which is Extended Use of Right-of-Way, and they permitted several of these throughout downtown any business could partake. This provided waiting areas for customers and activated streetscapes. In 2021, the City of Flagstaff and DBA did a survey across downtown businesses. The first day, 43 people, or 43 businesses responded. Most supported parklets, mostly supporting them, limiting to no more than two or three parking spaces per block, and then also supporting that if you're going to extend across your frontage, that you get your neighbors' approval. And almost all supported requirement for attractive barriers or furniture. So this slide just shows different ways that those attractive amenities can be designed. There's a lot of creativity. So, as I mentioned, we've been looking at different ordinances to see how programs that have been really successful are able to manage these both safely for the community and aesthetically. So one of the big things is making sure that they're, where they're located is appropriate. So looking at streets that are 25 miles per hour or less, making sure that they're spaced appropriately from different transportation intersections or traffic controls. We obviously don't want parklets right up against a major intersection or a stop sign. Accounting to make sure that we account for drainage, again, the adjacent property approval if necessary, and then making sure that we're not, that these aren't having an unintended impact of creating obstructions on the sidewalks. We've also looked at if we did an ordinance that we want to look at construction safety standards, such as making sure that they are ADA accessible, that they're enclosed appropriately to provide a barrier in case there is any kind of a traffic crash, which they typically wouldn't happen on 25 mile per hour road. Looking at the vertical elements as well as what kind of parallel traffic protection that might be provided, so barriers like the wine barrels that you've seen at Pay and Take locally, and then just making sure that there's buffer from these, from adjacent parking spaces. Other things that might be considered are materials. We want to make sure that these are, again, attractive and that they add to the aesthetic value of our community. So looking at high-quality and durable materials that can withstand weather. What type of material types would we want to see? Making sure they have slip-resistant coatings and colors. So with that, that is my presentation, and I thought that I edited that slide, so I'm going to go back so you don't see the template. But with that, I really wanted to spend the rest of the time to answer your questions and talk about, you know, getting direction from you all of, is this something that we want to see in our code? As I mentioned before, the ones that are permitted today are through the Euro permit, but we would like to make it codified so that businesses want to invest in bringing these to our communities. And part of that would also be a fee structure. They are taking right-of-way that typically could be, you know, paid parking. So we've looked at different ways of doing that, working with park flags so that, especially in the downtown area, if these are located in an area that would usually be pay-for-park, that we are charging a fee so that park flag is compensated for that. In other areas of town, if we extended beyond downtown, how would we structure that? So those are all things that, you know, we look at as being part of the, an ordinance. So again, I'm looking for direction on, would you like staff to put this in code? And if so, in addition to what we've brought up, what else would you like us to consider?
Thank you, Michelle. Before we get to questions and discussion from council, we do have some public participants I'd like to bring up, starting with Teri Medexa.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Teri Medexa, and I'm the Executive Director of the Flagstaff Downtown Business Alliance. The FDBA supports developing a parklet program for the City of Flagstaff. Formalizing a parklet program is a good step towards enhancing the pedestrian environment, encouraging traffic calming, and providing opportunities for businesses citywide to offer outdoor seating. And Flagstaff is not alone. Cities across the globe have implemented parklets as a way to create vibrancy, increase spending, and continue to offer options for those that are more comfortable in an outdoor environment. Parklets in Flagstaff emerged as a strategy to respond to the impacts of COVID-19. We studied best practices in other communities, and we recognized a trend. Cities were finding success by reimagining how to use public spaces to maximize opportunity for pedestrians and customers. With Greg's leadership, the DBA worked with a multi-divisional team at the city, Michelle referenced the Euro team, to identify and implement creative ways to expand outdoor dining and add more seating in public spaces. In downtown, the team implemented a partial closure of Aspen Avenue adjacent to Heritage Square, allowing businesses to set up tables and chairs in the closed section of the street. We also worked with businesses to offer outdoor seating in private parking lots, expanded sidewalk cafes, added seating at Heritage Square, and we worked with the city to foster a pilot program allowing parklets to use one to two parking spaces. It is important to note that while downtown took advantage of these programs, these were available to businesses citywide. The result is people have discovered new value in spending time outdoors, and outdoor seating further enlivenes public spaces. The success of outdoor seating and dining that has popped up across the city is now sought after by patrons and adds vibrancy to otherwise hard streetscapes and parking lots. Activating these spaces also increases the customer experience in a way that keeps Flagstaff as a year-round destination and ensures continued economic activity. The DBA looks forward to working with city staff as a formal parklet program is developed. It is important to remain engaged and to provide feedback as location standards, design and safety standards, appropriate fees, and maintenance expectations are discussed. I look forward to being a part of those conversations, and I'm happy to answer any questions. With 12 seconds to spare.
There you go. Excellent. Counsel, any questions for Teri? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Teri, for coming. We've talked about this before, I was hoping you would show up. I saw in the packet that a majority of the 43 respondents said that they supported this. Was that 40, 42 of 43, or was that 22 of 43? Or how many people?
Right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman McCarthy, thank you for the question. I don't have the survey results in front of me, but I can share those with you. We had 43 respondents on the first day. If I recall, we had close to 60 or 70 that responded in total. So it was just that first day, I think people were excited to share their feedback. And I think we had 67 or 69% of the businesses in support of parklets.
Okay, thank you. I have talked to business owners on both sides of this issue, so it's not a slam dunk. But I have some more questions for staff, but I'll hold those for now.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I'm not saying anything further. Oh, Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Teri Medexa, for your participation tonight. I should have warned you about this question.
Okay.
Of course, in addition to what you have mentioned, and probably if there are any downtown business owners who are present here, they could probably answer this question as well. But in terms of economic impact, so do we have a number in terms of revenue, percentage of revenue increase, a percentage of increase in visitation, and percentage of locals who are attracted to the parklets?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Salas, that's a really good question, and I will do my best to answer that. I don't have concrete information. You may get more from asking a business about their sales. We don't have access to sales data, nor do we get sales tax revenue data, so it's difficult for us to measure in terms of spending. But what I can tell you is anecdotal, both in terms of Flagstaff and in looking at other cities. I mean, downtown has one parklet. We have other outdoor dining in private parking lots and on sidewalk cafes, and I think there is a vibrancy that that activity creates. And with vibrancy, you see additional spending. Can I prove it to you? Not tonight, but when I see people walking around or they come and they sit outdoors at Fratelli's, even if it's in a parking lot, they're more prone to walk around and spend more of their time and more of their money in downtown. When I look at other cities, they have many, many parklets. We have one, other cities have many more, and there is information out there about increased spending when you have more opportunities for added seating and people spending their time and spending their money. I just don't have it off the top of my head, but I can find, they have economic impact studies associated with parklets that I can share with you after tonight's meeting.
Thank you, though it was, that would be helpful, but I could share with the anecdotal experience and observation as well, like with one we have here, but also my experience in other cities, El Paso, Texas, and I believe some in Colorado Springs, and Denver. Denver, though, Denver has the entire section blocked closed. And also, and the recent experience too for me is Washington DC, where they closed a block for an event. So I guess that's, that's temporary use of, like, closing the street. But whether it's a permanent parklet or closing a portion of the main street, it's, it really attracts activity and, of course, purchases with the businesses downtown and have, have a place for gathering, especially, you know, this post-pandemic scenario. And I look forward to a very productive, productive discussion, and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teri. Councilmember Allison?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I wasn't sure when to start sharing my thoughts. I'm looking forward to a really nice conversation this evening.
If we could have all the, we have three more public participants, so if you have a question-
Well, I'll just segue into what I was going to say right now, which was just to take the opportunity to publicly thank Teri and the Flagstaff Downtown Business Alliance for allowing me to accompany you all, full disclosure, to the International Downtown Associations Conference, which happened to be in Vancouver this year. That was just last week. Really enjoyed the experience. I've been a big fan of parklets long before accompanying you on that trip, but I also learned a lot, and I look forward to sharing some of those thoughts and hearing more tonight. Just wanted to take a moment publicly to, to express my gratitude and just to let you know and the public know that I had a wonderfully, a wonderful time, learning a lot about downtowns, and how hard of a job it is that you do, and how underappreciated you are and behind the scenes you are. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Mayor, may I, may I make one more comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
You know, one of the things that really strikes or sort of sticks out to me is when we were in Vancouver, there was an open street with a car and a parklet and diagonal parking spaces and trash bins. And it was, I have this picture, and it makes me think-
And a fire truck, we witnessed a fire truck drive down that road-
We did. And, and it shows me that our public spaces can accommodate many, many things. It's not just vehicles. It can accommodate people, it can accommodate outdoor dining, and I think it's one of the things that we're trying so hard to accomplish in downtown with the help of the city, with Greg and the Euro team. We've closed Aspen Alley, we're adding dining and outdoor seating at Heritage Square. We want our space filled with people, and when we have people, we have spending. So there's that sort of anecdotal connection. And so everything we're talking about is a goal, not just for downtown. It is, it is a priority of ours, but this is also citywide. When we go to Brandy's at the Cedar at Safeway and there's people sitting outside and they're outdoor dining, the space looks great and inviting. So I think for, even though I represent, represent the Downtown Business Alliance, this is a citywide code we're talking about, and it's something we wholeheartedly support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have Daniel Powell.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Sweet, Mayor Deasy, I appreciate your time today. Apologize for my nerves ahead of time. You know, I am here and I'm speaking definitely in support of parklets. I own Pay and Take Downtown. I've been a member of this community for over 28 years, went to NAU here, my wife works at Gore. We're very much a part of the Flagstaff community. And I'm going to tell you today about, you know, what this parklet has done, not only for the community, but what, you know, for our business. So, you know, I support them for most, multiple reasons, including the vibrancy, energy, and economic opportunity they provide for both public and business good. Parklets support an evolving business and visitation model we are seeing all over the nations, from small towns to big cities. What I have seen is parklets help create an opportunity, both economically and recreationally, for people to come down and experience a new, fresh, and evolving character of Flagstaff's downtown, making it sort of a point of interest for people walking, biking, and visiting the area. So, you know, not only our locals, but for tourists as well. Our parklet has been a part of an overall downtown experience for people looking for a fun, fulfilling evening, whether it's meeting with friends, going to dinner, and seeing a show, you know, and that's one thing that we have witnessed at Pay and Take is kind of speaking to what you were saying, Councilmember McCarthy, was we see people, they come down for a beer or a glass of wine or a soda, and then, you know, they, they go to dinner after that, so it's kind of part of a, of their entire evening. So to survive the challenges of the last two years, businesses had to evolve. As you know, the pandemic took a costly toll on small businesses. According to the National Library of Medicine, 22% of small businesses were lost in 2020. My business, Pay and Take, almost joined that statistic. We were forced by the governor to be shut down for over seven months. It was then we knew we needed to get creative where we want to survive. Working in collaboration with city staff and others, we were able to create a safe, health-compliant outdoor space that the public was comfortable in and save our small business from falling victim to COVID-19. Remember, social distancing is difficult in a thousand-square-foot space, which is the size of our bar. This collaboration was the first of its kind, forging a new path forward for other businesses to create energy and a safe, safer customer environment for consumers in downtown Flagstaff. This has been a significant investment by our small business. We need to hedge against future global health crisis and COVID-19 spikes in order to survive. COVID-19 is not over. These outdoor spaces allow people to feel safe, excuse me, and to appropriately social distance if necessary, while still allowing small business to thrive. There are still a lot of people who feel safer outside. The positive reaction from the public has been incredible. Not only have we gained new local customers, but we've been able to pay off the debt incurred during the pandemic and continue to have a popular space downtown that adds color, life, and vibrancy to the Flagstaff experience. We often hear, "It's good to have space downtown we feel safe and comfortable with." So on that note, you know, we would really appreciate your support for parklets moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Yes, Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Powell, for being here. I understand, you know, your business, of course, in partnership with our city staff, embarked on this pilot project, of course, with the extended use of Right of Way. And I think the governor's office was also kind of involved in this process, you know, as, you know. Gosh, that was two years ago.
It was.
Right. Two years. It's kind of like a blur. So, okay, so we heard official announcement that, you know, we're out of the pandemic, but COVID's still around. But I would like you to take the time to speak to the opportunities for collaboration and partnership with other businesses, with nonprofits, for business-to-business referrals, because that's what I've seen in other communities, like, you know. Because right now, the standard time of a visitor stay downtown is about two and a half hours. I think that was a report from city staff a few months ago. Using this new technology, we're tracking visitors movement, right? Just kidding. I think we have a way of figuring that out. Yes, so please speak to the opportunities of moving forward, because I know we're in the business of engaging local businesses to evolve with this new model and hopefully flourish.
Yeah. You know, as far as collaboration goes, we actively participate with Flagstaff Shelter Services, often doing fundraisers for them, the Whale Foundation, if you're familiar with them, supporting our river community here in town. We serve pizza clette, pizza, in-house at Pay and Take on certain nights of the week. We've done grand opening parties. We had a great grand opening party for Cosmic Cycles. And we also partnership, partner with the Orpheum Theater to kind of help co-promote shows that they're having there. So, you know, this parklet is, you know, is pay and take, but it's also great support to other businesses. Kind of going back to what I was saying earlier about, you know, hopefully you start there or you end there, but it's kind of part of your journey through downtown Flagstaff. And that's what we've seen. You know, and anecdotally, it's kind of one of those tough things when we talk about financial. But what we've seen is, you know, post-pandemic, we didn't have much business. And we got this parklet into place, and we slowly started to see ourselves come back to the numbers we had pre-pandemic. And, you know, we had a lot of debt incurred during that time to pay employees and to just be shut down for that long. And what we've seen now is that we're back to pre-pandemic numbers, and we're actually doing a little bit better. So, you know, that's really, that's really good for a business that's been there over twenty-five years, that we're finally starting to feel like we're flourishing and not just keeping up, so.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. You had a parklet on the asphalt, and you've upgraded it. I came by and checked it out.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Thank you.
Did a good job, and I want to thank you for putting that money and effort into doing that.
Yeah.
The other thing I'll mention is that I was walking by there one day and talked to one of your managers. And I said that my wife uses a wheelchair.
Yeah.
And I see that she could not get through here. Well, the next time I walked by, I see that you addressed my question.
Absolutely.
You put something in the tree well.
Yep.
So that she could get by. So one, kind of, just to let staff know that, in my opinion, we have to be very careful to not block the sidewalk for pedestrians and for wheelchairs. And, you know, that applies to parklet issues, but also where we're letting people use the sidewalk for drinking and dining, which is, you know, has its place too. So anyway, I just want to thank you for taking care of that wheelchair issue. I just casually mentioned it. Next time I came by, fixed. Thank you.
And, you know, we worked with Rebecca and Reggie on that, you know, that that space hasn't changed. That's not the parklet, you know, just to be clear. It's kind of just the sidewalk space. But, you know, they came up with a really great solution for us, and it took us a while because we couldn't pour that rubberized cement with the rain. So we were kind of in the middle of a two-week period. That's why I emailed you the second it was done, so you would know. But with our parklet, going back to that, so, you know, because ADA was so important to us, we have, we oversized the space for ADA, for wheelchair accessibility to turn around once you're on the parklet. And our entrance is eighteen inches wider than it needs to be, because we just wanted that, you know, not only for ADA accessibility, but also for just ease of use, you know, wheelchairs, strollers, things like that. So, you know, to really help with the public, so that everyone can use it, if that makes sense.
Well, I appreciate your extra effort on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I just really appreciate your business, and thank you for your leadership. I have visited the Pay and Take parklet any number of occasions, and I find it absolutely delightful. I think it's one of the greatest upsides coming out, one of the, you know, silver linings coming out of the pandemic. And I just really appreciate the leadership and the pioneering and the trailblazing and the opportunity that you have created for other businesses all throughout Flagstaff. And I know no good deed goes unpunished. And sticking your neck out can come with certain risks as well as rewards.
Yeah.
So just thank you for that. I do have a question for you.
Sure.
You're here, I might as well ask you. You know, one of the sessions that I attended at the International Downtown Association Conference was on outdoor dining. And surprise, surprise, a vast majority of the conversation was surrounded around parklets. And the panel involved people from all over, not only the United States, but Canada, Germany, and other places. So there's a lot of horizontal learning going on about best practices and how to do this, and nothing but pure excitement in the room. Of course, these are choir members preaching to choir members. But some of the challenges were interesting. In New York City, it was hard to get parklets going for a while because it was illegal for a waiter or a waitstaff to transfer alcohol across the sidewalk.
Yep.
I'm wondering if you haven't identified any state-level legislative concerns that need to be addressed in order to make what you're doing more successful and possibly, while you're at it, just thinking about other businesses trying to do outdoor dining in Flagstaff.
Yeah, that's, the logistics, you're right, was something that we came up against that's sort of behind the scenes that was big for us. You know, we're just this tiny little David taking on Goliath with this. And, you know, kind of back to Councilmember Salas' point, we, post, or when the pandemic hit, there was funds available. So we applied for the grant money to kind of help us out with our first incarnation of the parklet when it was on the asphalt. Money was channeled to small businesses like ours, and that's why we had that, you know, the beautiful AstroTurf out there for a while. And so what that did is it made the State Liquor Board kind of pivot their previous ideas. You know, it used to be very strict and very rare standards where you could cross the sidewalk with alcohol. But now they've changed that standard. So in working with the State Liquor Board, now they follow city direction. So, you know, when we got our extended Euro permit, the State Liquor Board came in and just rubber stamped it, because they're now, the state is supporting the city, if that makes sense to you. And then, you know, there is extra insurance and things like that involved with crossing the sidewalk. But, you know, they come inspect railing heights, railing builds, depths, you know, ADA access. They, the State Liquor Board absolutely comes and inspects us to make sure we're above board there, and we pass the flying colors. Does that answer your question?
It's very informative. My question was, are you anticipating any other lingering legislative strings that need to be tied up?
We're not, no, because we got that State Liquor Board approval. And that's kind of the second part of the two-part. It's the city and the state that we work through.
And that's part of the opportunity the pandemic presented. It might not have been
Yeah.
such an easy lift
Absolutely.
under other circumstances.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Powell.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I too have enjoyed your parklet. And I'm wondering, how did you come up with the aesthetics? You did a great job. I love what you did. And was that just your idea, or did the Euro team help?
It was a really great collaboration between ourselves and city staff and others, and the DBA and others that are involved in that kind of thing. And what we did is we collaborated with sort of everybody involved, you know, at all those levels. And we said, "Well, what are other cities doing?" Like the pictures you saw on the screen there. And then what I did was I kind of, we had to work through safety issues as well. You know, the risk management department, kind of going back to those wine barrels, those are actually traffic barriers. And then we wanted to overbuild this, because we wanted to show what good looked like. We were kind of the pilot program, because even though everyone in downtown and the city was able to do this, we were kind of the only ones that pulled the trigger. So that's why you see the significant investment out of us, is because we felt, we felt really passionately about this. So when you look at what the city kind of downtown vision is, sort of what I did is I walked around and I looked around Heritage Square and saw what the city of Flagstaff had done, and we matched that aesthetic. You know, that's why now we're kind of letting the structure age a little bit before we put a patina on it, because it will match what's going on in Heritage Square. Because we feel this is kind of part of downtown, you know, not just Pay and Take. You know, the aesthetic was important. The planting of the trees, and then, you know, we didn't get them built yet, but next summer, flower boxes and things like that to really add even more vibrancy to it, so.
I appreciate your attention to detail on that. It does fit right in.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Appreciate it.
Next is Matthew Evans.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Sweet, and councilmembers. This is my first time speaking in such a forum, so please excuse any faux pas that I may make. I wrote an email to this supporting parklets earlier because I thought I wasn't going to make it due to work constraints, but luckily I was here. I will try not to repeat what I said in the email too much. But I am a, just a resident, citizen of Flagstaff. I'm a flight nurse with Guardian Air. So I'm coming from the perspective of a consumer, user of the parklets and downtown in general. I wanted to kind of address your question that you gave earlier, or you asked earlier, Councilwoman Salas, about, do you have any evidence of this enhancing business in the area? Is this, and because I'm just a consumer, I also have to just give anecdotal evidence. I did mention this in the email, but when you, when I used the parklet across the street from the Orpheum, in between the Orpheum and the, and Pay and Take, I was there one evening, and I was just sitting there alone, waiting for a friend to arrive, and was noticing, just kind of, it was a Wednesday evening, nothing really special going on. But there were a decent amount of people utilizing this parklet, say, around fourteen, between fourteen and sixteen people. And I was just thinking, like, well, this was a, watching these people enjoy this space and meeting people and talking, I was noticing that this is taking up two parking spaces. And two parking spaces, at best, before the parklets were there, were housing two cars. And unfortunately, as we know, way too many vehicles are occupants for one person. So these, so parking spaces for two people or a public meetings place for a large group of people. I think it's just, it's very easy to see that it's just a better use of very important public land, or land that you have. There's just areas there that are of higher value than single parking. You do have a, quite the, you do have resources as far as parking, and they are a little away on those thin roads, business-wise. I think they're better used as public spaces for people rather than spaces for vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Councilmember Salas?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to make a public comment and to write us. I believe you made reference to a metaphor or analogy about an elevator in your email.
Oh, yes.
I'm wondering if you'd be, no, you don't have. I just want to lift up your observation, because I think it's actually really salient and really important. The vibrancy of those two spaces, as opposed to two used parking, those spaces, it's enormous. It's a really nice observation.
It is. And every single other person that's made a comment has used the same word, vibrancy. And I, and that is an important word when describing a public space like a downtown environment. This city has done so well with Heritage Park to create a vibrancy that few other towns the size have. Obviously, that's a big, huge investment. You can't do that everywhere. But parklets seem to be a great way to create that type of atmosphere in a very economical way, right? Most of that, it seems like most of that cost would be borne by the businesses that would benefit, but still have a positive effect.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
I just want to focus on what my takeaway was from your three minutes. If you say you had two people per car and two cars, that's four people.
Yes.
And as you point out, as a parklet, like fifteen people can use it. So I just wanted to focus on that. I thought that was a very interesting point to bring up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right, we do have one online commenter, so plug him in. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Tyler Denham. Tyler, you can go ahead and unmute and give your comments now. Tyler, are you able to unmute and offer your comments? Okay. Apologies, Mayor. Let me try something here real quick. Tyler, can you go ahead and try again?
Hi, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That worked. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Tyler Denham. I'm speaking today as a private citizen to support the introduction of parklets in Flagstaff. It's an easy way to allow businesses to convert low-value swaths of pavement into beautiful, high-value pedestrian spaces. And enabling parklets fits right in with the city's goals for improving land use efficiency and neighborhood character. My personal experience with parklets and those types of spaces has been uniformly positive throughout the city. So far, I've been to the Dark Sky Space, the Pay and Take Parklet, the Beaver Street Brewery Space. And during COVID, I spent a lot of time at the parklets along Aspen Avenue. They feel like a little slice of that bustling, street-level pedestrian activity that European and South American cities are so famous for. There's just something uniquely appealing about hanging out in these kinds of spaces with friends and family. And with that in mind, and giving direction to city staff on how to proceed, I hope you prioritize a regulatory framework that is simple. Code complexity is a serious barrier to usage. It needs to be simple enough that the average Joe can easily figure out what's possible. There certainly needs to be some level of regulation with regards to safety and access to public utilities, fire hydrants, and whatnot. But outside of that, I would err on the side of simplicity. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tyler. All right, and that's our last public commenter?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, well, time to bring the discussion inward and see what direction from council we have. McCarthy and Vice Mayor?
Well, I'll start with a question. This is for staff. What about snow removal in the parklet itself? What do they do with the snow that's, you know, on their little patio area? And then also, does it interfere with snow removal from the parking places right next door to it? Thoughts?
Yeah, so they are.
Yeah, so they are required, even the ones today that are being allowed under the Euro permit are required to be removed. However, the one that exists has not had to do that because the owner has maintained their own snow, so they're removing the snow themselves. And then streets are removing that when they do the snow removal, so it's not been a problem. However, if you had an owner who was not responsible and not removing it, as long as the parklet's removable, then street maintenance could get in there. Street maintenance is also part of Euro and has been reviewing all of this. And I think Scott Overton might be on the call and could speak to it in more detail, but I don't believe that that's a concern to date. We've been able to manage it.
So it's something you're thinking through?
Of course, yes.
All right, thank you.
Good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm excited for this conversation, and, you know, I have two hats. I have my council hat, and I also have a small business in downtown. I love downtown. I've been visiting our heart of the city for 29 years, pretty much almost every day. So I know this downtown inside and out. And I can tell you that when I first moved here, there were a lot of boarded-up buildings. It was not vibrant, as our favorite word of the night may go. And that's not the case today. And there's a lot of players in, in this, but for me, watching our downtown thrive, especially after two years of some struggles, it's amazing. And I walk by Pay and Take almost every day and am excited when I see people out there. And I'm, I'm one of them. I love outside dining, even though COVID is not my concern right now. I do love to be outside. And I watch my customers walk by. They're staying in the downtown. It adds another reason to stay. And I want it to be more than the two and a half hours that Councilmember Solis referenced. And the more parklets and the more activity and the more people, that's possible. It is a uncertain time for small businesses. I'm not going to kid you. And this is one tool in the toolbox to ensure that we can remain vibrant, that our downtown can remain a great place to visit for locals and travelers. So I just want to frame the conversation and give you some food for thought for tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'm happy to jump in if others. So I think this is a great amenity to our downtown. The few things that I have some concerns about are regarding opening up parklets where, for example, somebody's holding a taco stand right outside Bandolero 66, or somebody has a cotton candy stand right outside the sweet shop. So as we start delving into the codes and such, I just want to make sure that we are not putting competition directly in front of the businesses. Now, that could be, for example, that, you know, first dibs to the property owners within 20 feet of the parking space or something to that effect. So that way, current businesses are having to pay the $6,000 plus a month lease aren't now having competition from somebody spending $12 a day in parking permit fees. So that's going to, that's something that's important, I think should be in the ordinance. But I would like to be able to move forward in this front, and I do think it's important to codify this more permanently as opposed to the very needed ad hoc basis that this was put together previously.
Those are great thoughts. I appreciate you bringing them up. You know, and I, I think generally, there are concerns to this sort of amenity addition. I just want to give voice to some of the hesitation that's out there. But as far as I'm concerned with your presentation, you've already identified those concerns that I, that I have, that I'm aware of. And I'm sure you're going to be very open to tackling additional concerns as they arise during this discovery process you're going through. One, one thing that I learned as a best practice in that session I attended is that a fee structure is important. Even where it's not taking over a parking spot, it's really important for a business to invest in the, the, the private space that they're turning into a public place because there can be abandonment issues if the business closes down or other, you know, when we're trying to figure out who's responsible, that, that fee structure can create a, a way for us to, to follow the responsibility. So that's really important. And the other thing I just wanted to give voice to is, you know, these, these parking spots don't just need to be used for outdoor dining. One of the ideas that is very popular in other communities are, there's already spinoffs to parklets. There are barklets, little patios where you, pup patios where you can let your dog play, where there's always water available and there's a place to do one's business or whatever while next door someone's having a beer. So I, I could see a lot of excitement around that sort of, something like that cropping up maybe closer to Heritage Square itself that's not necessarily tied to a business. Anyway, it's just an invitation to think very creatively about how we can, we can take these, these parking spots that currently house empty cars and probably for one person and turn them into pockets of vibrancy. It goes beyond food and drink.
Well, one thing I forgot to mention as well is that I also want to make sure that this is open to all types of businesses. So, you know, traditionally, we're talking restaurants and so forth, but I think this should also be open to retail stores who want to expand their business right outside their business. So forgot to add that, but.
Yeah, put some apparel out on the street, for example. Let's see, there was one more thing I was going to add before I closed down here. I'm kind of forgetting what it was, though, so.
Well, if you remember, Councilmember Solis had her hand up. So pass the torch and.
I'll pass the torch.
I am in awe in terms of, first of all, let me thank staff again. Be grateful heart for introducing, introducing this idea, of course, with working with our, our pilot business with extended use of right-of-way. I am in awe and, and full of hope moving forward as I can only begin to imagine the multiplier effect of, of codifying this. First, I agree, we need to establish a requirement for permit and license or license, establish fees. As you know, I am all about cost recovery. And establish development standards, including allowed locations, safe safety standards, construction criteria, allowed materials and signage. I am, I look forward to breathing life into parklets in other areas. Like last Sunday, Vice Mayor and I were at the Landy Bendents celebration, the Green Tree Shopping Area. That is beaming with, with optimistic and like, we could have parklets in those areas. Of course, like, like the, the other shopping areas in, on Milton Road. It's, for me, this is a good opportunity for our existing businesses, whether it's, is in the hospitality, lodging, restaurant, cafe, retail, and other related businesses to maximize the space. And just the multiplier effect in terms of empowering the business to not only survive, but thrive, evolve, and flourish, but also inviting our locals to support our local businesses and at the same time increase, increase the hours that visitors, visitors stay in, in, in Flagstaff, not only downtown, but the other areas of, of the city. So I am in full support of codifying the parklets.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I am supportive, but I do have a couple of comments. And I think the mayor might have brought this up, but I didn't catch it all. Would parklets only be allowed for establishments that have a store right in back of it? Or would it be allowed that somebody could rent a couple of parking places and put in a fast food trailer or something like that?
I think, so it's a great, it's a great point. I think if it were a trailer, it falls under a different use. And it kind of gets back to what we were talking about with having an adjacent property owner's permission. If you extended, you know, your parklet in front of your business to another business, so I think that we need to explore it more. I think that the food cart issue would be separate and, and require a separate license that's a more temporary, and it wouldn't be the permanent parklet. But to that, to that point, like say it was a retail and not a restaurant that could operate without a van or a truck, I think it goes back to getting that owner's permission that if you're going to be in front of their business. So we have to think that out more to make sure. It's a, it's a good point that you've brought up, but I don't see that being a huge, I think without, if someone were going to set a business, they would need an actual like truck or something. So I think that's a separate permit and.
Okay, it sounds like you thought that through or are thinking it through. The other thing is, I assume this is only for parking spaces. It would not include shutting down streets, at least at this point, unless there was some special deal like we did during COVID, which was fine.
That's correct.
Okay. And my last point is that, if I remember correctly, about two-thirds of the downtown businesses support this idea. Well, that implies that about a third of them don't. And some of them have contacted me and, and brought up some issues. And I, I think I'll just narrow it down to one issue that I think may be a significant issue, and that's noise. And specifically, I think it's probably inappropriate to have outside noise, excuse me, outside music at a parklet because if it's outdoors, it's going to be very noticeable to surrounding businesses. So I would not support live music at parklets. Other than that, I'm very supportive. I'm excited about it. I like the idea of, you know, hanging out on the street, next to the street. And I assume this only applies to some of the, you know, for instance, I don't know, would this apply to San Francisco where there's a lot of traffic? Or would it be limited to like, you know, Aspen and Birch where there's very little traffic?
So currently, the thought is, is that it would be available citywide and limited by the number. So for instance, if there's already like the one on Aspen with Pay and Take, we would, the traffic engineer, we'd have to assess, would it be appropriate to have another one? We haven't looked at, you know, where there's a lot of traffic. I think that will limit itself, but we haven't, we haven't looked at restricting it on any streets. It's, it's really open to the entire city.
I wouldn't think it would be appropriate if the speed limit were 45.
Correct. So, so we really are looking at limiting it to streets that are 25 miles per hour or less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so very good discussion. The main takeaway from my comments is I don't think we should have outdoor music at parklets.
Noted.
Yeah, Councilman Rasslin.
Thank you. There are, there are, the medians between the freeways are probably a good place we could look into. I, I wanted to bring up, so if we're, if we're using these parking spaces to become public places, we're losing parking spaces. I'm wondering, City Manager Clifton, if you have any thoughts on that, want to share. I know that parking is something you're very tuned into, you're laser focused on. We have commitments to downtown to provide parking, and just wanted to create a, a space for you to provide, provide any comments or thoughts on that, how to navigate it. I have some thoughts on it myself. I, I do think we can recuperate some of these parking spaces through engineering and, and parking space redesign, but I'm sure you can add something even more to that.
Yes, and thank you for the question. I would also invite Dave McIntyre to speak to this because he's actually closer to it than I am, but I am hearing kind of across the spectrum that parking is not so constrained. You know, the new lot at the old courthouse, which is a temporary lot, granted, but there's a lot of vacancy there. We're seeing a lot of vacancy on the other side of 66. And actually having conversations right now about incentivizing other uses, not, I mean, staying with parking, but, you know, looking at possibilities, i.e. overflow parking for Southside residents. Not saying that's going to happen, but these types of conversations are happening because we want to continue to enhance parking. Similar comment with the newly created spaces over by the new courthouse. Yeah, not, not seeing capacity. Over time, you know, I think the thinking is we will. But currently, anyway, the, the current snapshot is not a constraint. Dave, you want to add to what I just said?
I don't think there's all that much to, to add other than that, you know, Park Flag has been a part of these conversations. We're actually really excited about the idea of having some of the spaces to create that vibrancy in the downtown and the district itself. We do believe there's enough inventory to be able to, to serve the district's needs while allowing for this kind of vibrancy. That's part of the conversation around limiting the number of spaces per block because we do want to make sure people can park and that the other businesses can get their customers in. But we do have the two, two new surface slots. We also are building our lockbox, if you will, to try to develop more inventory. Fees from the parklets could go to Park Flag. I know that's something that's come up as a part of the conversation. That'd be something for you to decide in your ordinance, but that could help to actually add to our ability to build more parking in the future. And, and a vibrant district is only going to be beneficial that way. So I'll just support what City Manager Clifton said, and thank you for the question.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have very much to add to the conversation, and I think you've gotten pretty clear direction from council, but I just wanted to share how, how exciting this is. You know, just hearing about the, the success at, at Pay and Take and, and just the, the innovative ideas, especially some that Councilmember Aslan shared, are just very exciting for, for the vibrancy of downtown and the levels of community engagement that can be enabled by parklets and, and things like it. So I'm, I'm very excited by this prospect. Thanks. Thank you.
Just a couple of things to add. Since this is a citywide ordinance, one thing I would like to restrict is not in residential neighborhoods. If it's zone residential, I think we're going to walk into a little bit of a mess with that. And secondly, to address Councilmember McCarthy's concerns with, regarding the music outdoors, in a few weeks, we'll be dealing with the noise ordinance, and that should be able to handle the problem as opposed to potentially, as opposed to putting that and codifying it in the ordinance with the parklets. I mean, if you have somebody playing guitar on a corner, well, we have it plenty of the time. I've been one of them hanging out outside the steep playing guitar. I don't see it as much difference, so long as it's not of a volume that is disaffecting others, which we can address through other ordinance.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anything else.
Thank you for your.
There. Oh, Councilmember Shimonny popped up here. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the conversation and all those who weighed in on this discussion. I just wanted to weigh in. I, I appreciate the discussion and the direction we're heading in, and that's why I've remained silent, but just wanted to weigh in on the topic of sound and amplified sound at the parklets. I'm fully supportive of it. I'm aware of some of the struggles in, with, with a couple of our businesses, but I, I support moving forward with allowing for music on, on our parklets. Just wanted to make sure I voiced that, that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonny. All right, with that, thank you for your presentation, Michelle, and for all the public input, but looking forward to seeing the. input, but looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Thank you all. Thank you for your input.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number 10, Discussion and Direction on a Potential Property Care Ordinance. Dan the Man, up front.
I'm going to try to keep it vibrant and, you know, interesting here. Splendent?
That's a good one. Somebody who's been looking at a Saurus.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Dan Fulk. I'm the Community Development Director. And like I said, we're going to try to continue to keep this as an interesting and vibrant discussion. Property care isn't quite as interesting as parklets, I don't think, or maybe is universally exciting, but it's certainly an important issue. We've had some great participation, so I'm pleased to be here tonight and, and update you on what we've been working on. And so here's just a quick overview of what we're going to present tonight. We're going to go back through a little bit of history, because the city did consider an ordinance almost 12 years, or 10 years ago. And then we've done some survey work, and we're going to talk about the working group. We'll go over what we've proposed in terms of standards and talk about our city code, and then look for some direction on next steps. I want to acknowledge the team that's been working on this. It's been a really fun project for me to work on. Really pleased to have Mark Revis, Jordan Hollinger, they're both going to help me here tonight, from our Comprehensive Planning and Neighborhood Program. Obviously, great support from Reggie Eccleston, our Code Compliance Manager, Kevin Dunlop, who's one of our code officers, Michelle McNulty, our Planning Director, Tiffany Antol, our Zoning Code Manager, and Sarah Decter, our Comprehensive Planning Manager, have all been really important members of this team. So again, I've enjoyed working on it. We've also had great participation from some of the other divisions and programs within the city. The folks in the second column participated in, I think, all of our six working group meetings. So I want to recognize Valetia Chase, who's our Off-Campus Life and Neighborhood Liaison, Stephen Thompson in Sustainability, Jenny Neiman in Sustainability, and Robert Wallace in Open Space. So it was a really fun team to work with. Why are we considering this now? It's a pretty good question. So it's hard to believe, but yeah, two years ago, there was a fair item, Future Agenda Item Request, that City Council supported, and so that was back in November of 2020, and staff was asked. We, we presented a little bit of history at that meeting about the 2012 ordinance, talked about some of the concerns that were heard at that time, but council did give direction to go ahead and start working on this. I'm going to give a little information a little later on the 2012 ordinance, and then really, the objective for tonight is to receive some direction on how you'd like us to proceed. So just in kind of broad strokes, what is a property maintenance ordinance or property maintenance standards, I'll call them? Ordinance is really only in there because you adopt it by ordinance, right? But it's really property care standards. And so they're just basically rules for the maintenance of land and buildings. And so it can be vacant property, it can be improved property, and then the structures on that property. You really need to focus on life and safety regulations. That's kind of the overarching reasons for having a property care regulations. Focuses on accumulation of garbage, debris, refuse, and litter. I deliberately put all those terms in there, because like with everything, the words you use and the definitions are important. And those are very common terms that you find on this subject. Again, dealing with hazardous and dangerous conditions, deteriorating structures, and abandoned properties. Those are typically the topics that you cover in a property maintenance regulation. And so things I think we just need to consider as we have this conversation, a lot has changed in 10 years, right, since the city last considered this? And so I've just picked some items that we talk about with almost everything we do. So always putting things through the housing emergency. So how does this, how would this, these new rules affect housing in Flagstaff, right? It's kind of everything we do now, we talk about that. Is it going to make housing more expensive? Is it going to make it more difficult? What's the impact to housing? Similarly, climate, with our climate emergency. What do these rules, how do they help our climate emergency? Are they neutral? You know, what is the effect on, on those efforts? This is a really important topic for neighborhood and heritage preservation, which I really feel great about our program, bringing Mark on board. It was a new position. Community Development took over heritage preservation. I feel like we've really grown the program in a couple of years, and so this is another tool that can help with that. You know, preserving structures, maintaining structures, is the first step to preservation. And we like to say, you know, the greenest building is the preserved building, and so that's kind of a climate theme that goes along with this topic. Social equity and social justice is part of everything we do now, especially in professional planning. There's been a big emphasis nationwide to kind of view, how has housing and planning affected current conditions, right? Or how has zoning and planning affected the housing market, the challenges that communities are facing? How's it impacted social justice and social equity? And so in a topic like this, I think we think about it in the terms of, no, obviously we want to enforce things equally, do compliance equally, but really equity is more about what are people's ability, right, to comply with certain rules? And so as we consider these things, I think we should think about, yeah, what are the, how does it impact different residents in our community? And what, what's the impact to different socioeconomic and different groups within the community? And then again, health and safety. As I was preparing, I was reminded of somebody that inspired me to become a planner when I was back in planning school in the 90s, Norman Crumholtz, is a well-known planner. He was with the City of Cleveland. He's really known for writing about social equity and social equity in planning. And I came across this quote, Norman Crumholtz, he only passed away just in 2019, and so I found this actually in an obituary, but I think it's very relevant to the topic tonight. You know, "It's not enough for cities to be beautiful and efficient. They could and should be just and fair as well. And planners should work toward human betterment." And I feel this topic certainly fits in this, and we just want to think about this as we're, as we're moving forward. So shout out to Norman Crumholtz. He's a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners. That's what the FAICP is. So just, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but I do want to talk about the 2012 ordinance. I included it in your packet. It was very much a traditional property maintenance ordinance, I would say. There are published property maintenance codes. This is what I call an off-the-shelf property maintenance code. It's very complete. Cities do adopt this. This was the basis for the 2012 ordinance. You see a lot of the same language in this that was prepared in 2012. It had a lot of definition of terms, some new terms. Let's see here. Debris, garbage, blight was a term that was introduced in the previous PMO. I do want to mention blight. Blight is another word that has some baggage with it, I would say. Blight is typically used with urban renewal. It's associated with urban renewal authorities. And there isn't a real great track record in the United States of urban renewal accomplishing what it was meant to do, right? So back in the 60s and 70s, a lot of urban renewal projects displaced a lot of low-income neighborhoods. It's, I studied planning in Atlanta, a lot of examples in Atlanta where they did these, these public projects under urban renewal, and one of the findings required is blight. And so that term, to me, is a loaded term. It has a lot of baggage with it. Urban renewal doesn't have a very good track record of being successful, frankly. There are examples, but what you find is a lot of those projects ended up displacing typically low-income neighborhoods. And when you come back and look at it 20, 30 years later, it didn't have the economic outcome that they were hoping for, right? It's a lot of, like, things like athletic stadiums and civic centers and things. And so to me, whenever I see the word blight, I feel like that's maybe something we need to be careful about using. And people don't feel good about being told their neighborhood is blighted, right? It's a very negative connotation. So again, just something to be aware of. The 2012 ordinance definitely required weather tight maintenance, and this is something we hear a lot about, right? Am I going to get a ticket because my paint is peeling? The 2012 ordinance did require you to maintain the structure, right? And if you had exposed wood, exposed materials, it needed to be painted or stained, somehow made weather tight. And so again, the traditional ordinances do talk about painting structures, maintaining structures. A lot of language about condition of property, again, accumulation of debris and garbage. There's a section in the 2012 ordinance and in this, this off-the-shelf one about abandoned building maintenance, and this is a topic that we got into and something that I thought maybe we would want to carry over from the previous ordinance. Essentially, PMOs say you can board up a building for 180 days, and after that, you have to do something else with it, right? Put indoors, put in windows. And that is something we explored at the working group, and I'll talk about it a little later. Again, the, the one in 2012 had that rule that you could only board something up for 180 days. And then it repealed certain sections of the code, so it really did consolidate things. Some of these rules that deal with property maintenance are all over our city code, and so that was going to be one of the big benefits of the 2012 effort. So when we started this time around, it was probably over a year ago, I just started going to some of the League of Neighborhood meetings, some of the individual Southside, Sunnyside, La Plaza Vieja meetings. And really, my first question was, you know, we're going to work on this. Should we just come back with the same ordinance, or should we try something different? And almost universally, folks said, let's try something different. And I use a lot of aspirational ideas, like, you know, this could be a way to help try to slow down gentrification, right? So if you're keeping people in their homes, there's a higher opportunity, I think, that the home won't be removed and replaced with something that's basically not affordable and you're displacing someone. So we use a lot of aspirational discussions. We did a community forum survey that Jordan's going to give you some update on. We developed an email list. We had about, I think around 70 people on that. We did some social media blasts for our working group meetings, and then we had a project webpage, which we've continued to maintain, and it's a good resource on this topic. We've got all the videos from all the working group meetings are up there. And so with that, I'm going to let Jordan give you some information on the survey, and then we'll continue on.
All right, good evening. So we put a survey out on the Flagstaff Community Forum, and I'll just run through kind of what we got from that. In the survey, we asked 10 questions that asked participants to identify things like the property care issues that they see. We asked that at two levels, both at their neighborhood level and then also kind of looking at the city as a whole, what people were seeing, how frequently they were seeing those issues, how impactful they perceived those issues to be to, to quality of life in Flagstaff, the importance of adopting a property care ordinance, or their perception of how important that was, and then concerns related to the adoption of such an ordinance. And then we asked a number of demographic questions, just to get a sense for who was answering the survey. So we had a total of 179 responses. One of the demographic questions that we asked was about what area of the city people came from, and we did get at least five responses from each area of the city that we listed. The top two were Northwest Flagstaff, which included the, the communities of Coconino Estates, Cheshire, and North Hospital, and then East Flagstaff, which included, include Shadow Mountain, McMillan Mesa, Sunnyside, and Greenlaw. Then a couple other highlights or key points from the demographic questions, 73% of respondents stated that they didn't pay HOA dues or were not part of an HOA. 85% of respondents had a bachelor's degree or higher. 66% were over the age of 40, and 75% identified as white. So in terms of the issues that we asked people to identify, as I said, we asked people to think about their neighborhood and then the city as a whole. I'll, I'll go over this slide pretty quickly. I did include the full survey results in, in the agenda item, so you have access to this. The key takeaways from the questions asking about issues that people see is that at both the neighborhood and city level, the perception of junk and trash accumulation were certainly identified as the top issues. Close behind there were building deterioration and unused or non-working vehicles. We did give people the opportunity to say that they didn't see any issues in both of those questions, but the majority of respondents did list at least one issue. We did see at the neighborhood level that 29% of respondents said that they didn't see any property care issues in their specific neighborhood. We also asked what people would like to see covered in a PCO, and the top items, the top three items, included trash waste, junk accumulation, and unused and non-working vehicles. So we also asked people how much of an issue they perceive property care to be, and then the importance of adopting a property care ordinance. We also had an open-ended question that asked people to list or to, to state how they felt property care impacted quality of life. Again, I'll, I'll go over this slide pretty quickly, but the, the highlights are the key takeaways. 65% of respondents answered that property care was either a very big or somewhat big issue to them personally. 49% of respondents answered that adopting a PCO was very or fairly important, and the majority did state that it was important or higher. I didn't include the open-ended question here, but some of the things that we heard in terms of quality of life included health and safety. There were mentions of fire hazards for things like debris accumulation, health concerns related to harboring rodents in, in sort of piles of, of junk. We also heard about property values. There was concern about property care impacting property values, and then sort of just general aesthetics also came up in that question. We made sure to ask people whether they had any concerns about the city adopting a property care ordinance, and 40% of respondents said that yes, they did have concerns. That's compared to 42% that said, no, they did not, and 18% said they, they were unsure or needed more information. So looking at the, the responses to, to those that answered that yes, they did have concerns, we saw people were concerned about inequitable impacts or the ability to comply with such an ordinance relating to things like health, race, income. We, there were a number of comments that stated we already have a lot of ordinances in our current city code that covered a lot of the issues that a property care ordinance might cover, and that they saw it more of an issue of enforcement of existing code rather than adopting new code. Certainly, a, a number of comments that talked about the subjectivity of aesthetic elements. If the property care ordinance got too heavy-handed on the aesthetics, that, that is a subjective conversation to a lot of people. And then general concern about sort of the, the, a property care ordinance just being generally overbearing. A, a lot of people said that it, on its face, kind of sounded like an HOA, and a lot of people chose to live in neighborhoods that did not have an HOA intentionally. So the high-level takeaways from the survey, respondents did clearly identify that they perceive issues with property care in the cities, so key issues, trash waste, junk, building deterioration, and unused or non-working vehicles. The majority of respondents did believe that adopting a PCO was important, but respondents were definitely split almost in two on whether they had concerns or not about the city adopting a, a PCO. So that's it for the survey.
Thank you, Jordan. Did you have any questions on the survey? We'll continue on.
Please proceed.
As I mentioned, so we did end up having six working groups over the summer, May, June, and July. They were very much open meetings. We didn't have an official working group. It was just an invitation for anyone to come. It was okay if you missed a meeting or two, come at any time. I would say we had a core group of probably around 10 who participated, and I think it represented the three neighborhoods that are really most, I think, supportive of this property care requirement. I mentioned the meetings are all posted up there. We did spend one of the six meetings on code compliance, because that, everything always comes back to how are we complying, right, or enforcing? We prefer to use the word compliance. So how are we doing code compliance? And so it's actually a really great session, if you want to watch one of them. Reggie Eccleston gave an overview on how we approach code compliance, and it's kind of part of this conversation, but I think it's a, it's a good one for everyone to watch. And so during those six meetings, we broke it out into different topics. We very much talked about a purpose and intent statement, and then we grouped all of these topics into kind of groups of three or four. So we took, we talked about debris accumulation hazards, equipment and vehicles one night. I think we had recycling refuse, attractive nuisance another night. And so we tried to kind of group them in like areas, and we really, what we did was we explored what the current rule is, right? Do we have something in the current code? We explored what's important to you under this topic, right? So what's important to you when we talk about debris accumulation? Do you see it a lot in the community? Give us examples of things that maybe aren't being addressed right now. And so we kind of talked about the issues. We looked at the current code that we had that addressed it, and then we tried to, you know, figure out, should we improve it? Should we change it? Do we need to do something else? And after a while, it kind of felt like most people were feeling like, well, we actually have rules on this. Maybe we need to make it more clear. Maybe we need to do a little more aggressive compliance work on it. But in general, I would say people felt like we kind of have a lot of rules in place, and maybe we just need to improve what we have. This was kind of one of my takeaways. And so probably about halfway through the meetings, it was actually Mark who had this, I think, I'm pretty sure it was Mark, who had this great idea of, maybe we just adopt some kind of simple definitive statements about what we're trying to achieve, and then support them with the existing rules. And that's kind of where we ended up with this approach, right? Is let's try to create some language that's very simple to understand, it's supported by the existing code, and then provide an appendix. And the appendix are kind of best practices, right? So here's how we would suggest you could resolve this issue that you've been notified about. We definitely understand we could consider new definitions and maybe improve some of our definitions. our definitions, and that these things would help improve compliance efforts, continuing to work with our neighborhoods for sure, kind of focusing in on what are the most important issues, and how can we improve our compliance work? Is it a code issue, or is it how we're talking with the community about it? And then the other thing that came away was this idea of creating a program. And one of the suggestions from 10 years ago was that we need to have resources to help people, right? And so a lot of times, it's not that people don't want to take care of their property, but they just don't have the resources. Either they don't have family in town, or they don't have the financial resources, you know, the support systems that many of us benefit from. And so this has always been part of the discussion, is some kind of a program where folks could actually apply and get some funding to help improve their property. Typically, I think we're talking about structures. It could be big cleanups, you know, removing debris and overgrowth and things like that. And so that's something that always we came back to as well, is creating a program and getting support for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark, because he actually wrote the standards. But I'll linger on the purpose and intent. I think I did more wordsmithing on this maybe than Mark did. And again, we went back and forth with the working group to being very aspirational, talking about it, trying to address issues like sustainability and gentrification. And we kind of went full circle and came back to just focus on really the core issue, which is life safety, right? So to improve and maintain the appearance of neighborhoods, to improve the quality of life by protecting health, safety, and welfare, having minimum standards for the exterior of buildings, both residential and non-residential, and then again, standards for vacant land to prevent from hazards, deteriorating conditions, and other bad conditions. And then the intent is really important, too. The intent of the city is to work with property owners to preserve existing buildings and housing. The property care ordinance shall be applied and enforced fairly and consistently. The city shall provide adequate notice to affected property owners to resolve conditions, and the city may provide resources to assist property owners with compliances there available. So again, kind of some foreshadowing of an intention to have a program, right? So with that, we'll let Mark take care of the next couple slides. We've got the draft standards. So let me get out of your way, Mark.
Just, Mark Revitz, Heritage Preservation Officer and Neighborhood Planner. I wasn't assigned this. I volunteered wholeheartedly to do this. It's in my wheelhouse. There's the documents that I researched into this. I had a lot of experience when I was in Butte, Montana, where ordinances were being treated as kind of repressive, and that's not what we want here. So taking the example of what Reggie does with his effort, it's highly effective how Reggie approaches this with his team. And I can tell you, I threw out, and people agreed, that it was, we started out as a property maintenance ordinance, and I came up with the word "care." That works with, instead of enforcement, that works with compliance. So we know that having people simplifying what is being looked at is a way to really go about this, that we get, you know, a lot better results with compliance first and seeing what the issues are. So I looked through, you know, the printed ones. I looked through the ordinance that didn't pass 10 years ago. I looked at a philosophy of historic preservation, where they talk about neglect with a building, demolition through neglect. So we looked at a lot of different things that is, you know, in this interesting thing that I did here. We broke it into the 10 categories. Working group went through all of those, and we talked it through. And then ultimately, it started, I started repeating myself, and it pretty much came down to the end, where we ended up with land and we ended up with buildings. And then also, there's an appendix where we talk about that the appendix is how you can take care of a building so it isn't an attractive nuisance type of thing. So it was greatly simplified along the way here. So when we're looking at draft standards, so eliminate, again, we're looking at refuse, recycling, debris, inoperable equipment, hazard, attractive nuisance, and health and safety. So we simplify it as a tool. Reggie could go out and hand that to people so they understand what we're talking about. But still intact is that we have those code items that we can keep working on and clarifying. They still exist there. So when people talk about the ability to enforce, they can still enforce those with the existing code. But once you start listing those code items, people get confused. People blank out. People don't know what you're talking about, correct issues. So which one do I hit? Thanks. So buildings and structures, again, as Heritage Preservation Officer, I like seeing buildings and structures staying, and that they provide housing, and they provide affordable housing for the people that are in there. So we're looking at resolving visual and physical signs of vacancy in a building. We have described how you do that in the appendices, providing security for the building, and resolving deterioration. Of course, you know, we talked about the extent of paint, but again, if the deterioration's so bad that you lose the structure, we're talking about keeping it and maintaining it in a way that it doesn't deteriorate, so it's no longer habitable for people. So, and again, it's the property owner's responsibility to provide no trespassing. That's their responsibility. And if they don't take care of their property, that's an issue. So we've given guidance in that appendices. It was important, again, how repressive and how we go about this, but, you know, such as our flooding issues and everything else, this exemption was asked for, you know, when there's an emergency situation where people can't handle things, that that exemption exists, which we think is really important. Again, this was working group with people actively participating. The appendices was pretty much me talking about heritage preservation and making sure that, you know, if you treat a building a certain way, you board it up in a certain way, people know that you're caring for the building, and they're not making an attractive nuisance. It's problematic for the neighborhood. The building stays around long enough, maybe they're able to sell it, maybe they're able to get to the financing where they're able to rehabilitate it. We, weeds and growth was a big issue. We did add that. We do think that there's a certain point where weeds do cause a problem within a neighborhood from potentially fire to be invasive-type weeds. So this was added to it as well. But going out there and measuring how high the weed is is not what we're talking about here. So I think that's the end. Again, these very simplified building and land regulation, or putting in this simplified version, are based and backed by the chapters that currently exist here. So there is a way to take it to a further level of enforcement. But again, we'd like to start the approach of being care and working with people has been so effective with Reggie's program. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And so one of the things we did was, in the materials that are handed, the materials in your packet where it lists these new standards, we actually made the references to applicable code sections that's in your packet. I took them out here because it does, it gets too busy. But basically, we referenced everything back to all these different sections of the code, and there's an attachment in your packet with all of these sections. And I'm not going to go through them all, but I went through it the other day, and I started highlighting things that are very relevant to what we're talking about, right? And so we mainly reply on the building regulations, the building code for unsafe buildings. And so this new approach, it wouldn't change that, we wouldn't, you know, we're not adopting a new standard for peeling paint, but if the building is at such a condition where it's dangerous, it's deteriorating, it doesn't have some of the basic functions that you need for habitability, and we do this now, we use the building code to go out and do an inspection, and we've posted buildings as uninhabitable because of the condition of the building, right? And so we're not talking about changing that. That would remain. That's our main tool for dangerous buildings. There is a section in Chapter 6 on nuisances. It's all about abandoned buildings. I mentioned that this was a topic we spent quite a bit of time on. And going into it, I was thinking that we might get support to limit it to six months, where you could board it up. But really, in the working group meetings, the feeling was, well, you know, if you require them to put indoors and windows, is that really going to force them into, like, renting it to somebody? Probably not, if they've already abandoned it. So are we really going to gain much by trying to get it looking differently? Or is the security of the building the most important thing? So in the end, the group decided just to stick with our current standard, which is to board it up. Littering is our big section on refuse and litter, abandoned vehicles. There's language in there about vehicles that are unlicensed. The language in our abandoned vehicles section very much mirrors what was in the 2012 ordinance. I see a lot of similarities on things that we already have. Collection practices and storage and placement, again, is about your bins and when you can put them out, when you have to take them in. We have a good section on graffiti. I mentioned the trees and shrubbery. This is about encroachments into the public right-of-way. So we focus a lot on life safety now. Reggie and his team spend a lot of time making sure sidewalks are clear, line of sight at intersections, and so this is the section where trees and shrubbery, encroaching into the right-of-way. Prohibition of right-of-ways, again, basically, you need permission to use the public right-of-way in the city. We included some stuff out of Chapter 10 that deals with screening of dumpsters, which is tied to recycling and refuse. The maintenance of landscaping, this is in our zoning code. It's not, it's not a requirement for single-family homes. It's for projects we have to do required landscaping, multifamily, commercial. There's things in there about maintaining that. And then our general parking standards has a section on unregistered and inoperable vehicles. That's why I included it. You basically have the right to work on one inoperable vehicle at a time. It does have some things about keeping it in, out of the front setback and, you know, in a garage or the side yard. That's why I included that one. And then again, more about adjacent right-of-way and maintenance of that. So again, if you want to get into a lot of detail, we can certainly dial down into these subjects. But that's really our basic approach. And I do think we need to make some improvements on some of these sections. We would all benefit from that, for sure. Again, I've mentioned definitions and making sure these sections all work together if this is the direction we go. And so really, that's what we're looking for tonight, is just how do you want to proceed? Do you like this approach of adopting these new standards supported by the current code? Would you like us to go back to a more traditional property maintenance ordinance? Or do you want to just continue with what we have and not include the new language? So an ordinance would really include this new language that Mark went over, which are these draft standards, the purpose and intent, and then the standards for land and for buildings. And so with that, we're happy to open the discussion and receive any public comment you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Before we get to that, we do have one public participant. I'd like to call up Jesse Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Jose Dominguez. In case you guys don't know, my alias is actually Jesse. I live at 510 West Timstown. I'm a lifelong resident of Flagstaff, born and raised. I think the first time I showed up at this podium was in 2006. I think Rick Swanson was city council at that time, city councilman. And we talked about a property maintenance ordinance. So then we tried again in 2012, and here we are again, again. But I love what Dan and his staff did. They took the approach of being transparent. They invited everybody to the party. They said, hey, what don't you like? What do you like? And believe it or not, we had some discussions, didn't we, Dan? I mean, there was, what are you thinking? What are you thinking? We were all thinking. But what's, what's, what's in our city council, the mission? Quality of life for all. For all. Not these folks, not these folks. It's for all of us that live here in Flagstaff. Beautiful Flagstaff, so we want to make sure we keep it that way. And I think this, you know, you talked about a tool with a parklets. Well, this is another tool for the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that, you know, some people care and some people don't care. And that's, that's, that's the sad thing about it. Not everybody cares, but we do. And we want to make sure that everybody has that quality of life that we talk about. So I just want to thank Dan and his staff. I mean, they were fantastic. And of course, Greg, you know how that works, right? You got the worker bees. They did a fantastic job, and I hope you approve this. Let it go forward one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was the only public speaker. Yeah, Councilmember Soss.
Mr. Dominguez, please come back to the podium.
Yes, Mrs. Soss.
So, on the screen, it says next steps, and there are, and there are three options. So what is your recommended next step?
I'd say go with what Dan says. The PMO, it does not work. It scares people. You know, it's Big Brother coming after you. It's Big Brother throwing out some little old lady that can't cut her lawn. That's not what we're talking about. And he also talked about resources. You know, with the League of Neighborhoods, believe it or not, there's three neighborhoods, Plaza Vieja, Southside, and Sunnyside. But you'd be surprised how many other neighborhoods want to join us. We're trying to figure out, how do we make our League of Neighborhoods bigger? Because there's NoHo, there's Bobo Nero, there's Upper and Lower Greenlaw. Guess what? We all have the same problem. We have that person that doesn't want to take care of their, and it's affecting my quality of life. If I can see it from my yard, it's affecting me. You know, you don't see it from across town. It's just like, I didn't see the flooding in Plaza Vieja, but it affected my neighbors. It affected my friends. Same thing. I mean, you have an old junk car upside down with the tires off of it, and we're going to see it, we're going to drive by? Yeah. We're better than that. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Mr. Foe, if you could go back to the slide that has selected approach. There you go. So Mr. Dominguez, you probably are familiar with this slide. So it lists the selected approach, and what are your thoughts on this approach?
The approach is be neighborly. And I know, by the way, I didn't know there was a code compliance detail. I read it on Facebook or something. Congratulations to your guys. They deserve it. And, you know, they're, they're caught between a rock and a hard spot. Sometimes they got to be the bad guys, and sometimes they're the good guys. Most of the time, the good guys. And they try to be fair, and I think that's the key right there. You don't have to come in there and say, hey, you got to do this. They come in. I've had issues with, one of my staff, or one of my neighbors turned me in for tree limbs that were thrown in my backyard. I said, I didn't throw them in, it was the other neighbor. But we were able to work it out, and we were able to talk to each other. And then we got APS to haul it off. So that worked out really well. So we worked together, and I think that's the approach. You know, creative, simple, clear, standards for buildings and land. I think it's, it's, it's a new approach versus that Big Brother approach. I think Dan and his staff, I mean, they're great. I can't say enough of them, about them. And I know spend a lot of time with us where they could be home doing something better. Right, Dan? You could have lunch or dinner, whatever, but they, they're dedicated, and I guess that's what I'm trying to say. They are dedicated to the quality of life for all of us, City of Flagstaff. I mean, just to give you a good example, that beautiful bridge that just got put out there, what did you see? What do you see when you come around the corner? Has anybody noticed? Has anybody noticed? Graffiti. Brand new. How dare them? Irks me. Irks me. That's our tax dollars. But what does the tourist see when they come around the corner? Oh, graffiti on that brand-new bridge. So, you know, so there's somebody out there that's doing their artistic artwork, I guess. But anyways, I, I, I get long-winded and I won't stop talking. So, thank you again. I hope you guys really push forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to take this moment to express my gratitude to Mr. Dominguez and his leadership on the League of Neighborhoods. It was actually his leadership along with the leadership of Sunnyside and South Side Neighborhood Association that the previous council brought this as a fair item. And I remember supporting it. And I made sure at that time, the discussion of our item make, we have to make sure that the League of Neighborhoods is, will be very much involved in the process of developing this. And with my grateful heart, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Soss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Folk, I, I really wanted to kind of hone in on the statement. This isn't a question, so don't, don't worry about that. But you made a, a statement at the beginning of your presentation about how much language matters. And I'm, I'm really grateful for the focus that you and the team all put into this on equity that was emphasized throughout the conversation. In my own conversations with some neighborhood communities, specifically the South Side Community Association, and being able to participate in some of these conversations with the League of Neighborhoods, one of the things that was really important to me and was clearly very important to the communities was the focus on property and, and more broadly speaking, community care. So I love that that's really the, the focus in the language. I, I fully support the idea of a, a property care program and the approach that, that you've outlined here. I think it's really important that we are supporting the code that, that we have with this ordinance or set of standards, however we refer to it. But using that as a supportive and programmatic tool that's equitably servicing those communities and providing the support that's needed for the compliance. So I'm definitely on board with moving this forward and look forward to the, the rest of the conversation. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Soss. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, Dan, let me see if I understand what your proposal is.
All right.
I don't think I quite do, but I'm close. It sounds like what you're saying is the existing codes is all we need. We just need to focus on them. So are you proposing creating some document that would be available to the public or available, and available to our code enforcement people? That says, well, you know, please clean up your, and I'll use the word rubbish. Is that one, is that one?
It's one of our defined terms.
Rubbish.
Yes.
Anyway, so if I'm reading this correctly, you don't, you're not suggesting any code changes. Maybe some refinement of definitions and some tweaking here and there. But basically, you don't need any more code. You just need, what? A document that kind of like summarizes it all and, and explains it to the public and to code enforcement? Is that correct?
Well, we're recommending that there are, there is some new language put into the city code. And it's with this purpose and intent, and then these standards for land and for structures. And so that would be an amendment to the code. The last, the last version was in Chapter 7, I believe. And so the idea is you would adopt these new standards, this purpose and intent and standards, but they're supported by the existing code, right? So an example is,
They would be?
Eliminate debris accumulation that harbors pests, deteriorates conditions, presents a fire danger, and impacts health and safety. And somebody might say, well, what does that mean? Eliminate debris accumulation? So then you'd go back to our littering section where it defines these terms. And it says, you cannot have an accumulation of this on your property. And so we are proposing this new language, but they're supported by the current code, by the existing code. And there's probably some fine tuning we need to do, right? And I do think we'd benefit from some new definitions. But that's, and I think what I like about it is we could, we could do this amendment to add this new language and then continue to work on our existing code and make it just more useful, I think, and more, more clear to our, our community.
So in effect, this would be sort of like a preamble and an explanation that you would actually put in the code.
Yes.
But then the basic hard rules would be basically what we already have now.
That's the approach, yes.
Which sounds like a good approach to me. I mean, just to kind of step back a little bit, philosophically, I think we do need some kind of enforcement. But we don't want what former council member Jeff Orvitz used to call the nanny state. We don't want that. I mean, if somebody's got a, a square inch of peeling paint, you know, some cities might write them a citation. Well, that's baloney. That's ridiculous. We don't want that. But what we do want to do is address the blatant recurring things. So I am supportive of that. But let me just ask a couple of questions. I'm just going to read an address here. 1726 North Kutch. I bet you know that address. That house has been abandoned for years. It's boarded up. There has been no, no maintenance of the landscaping. Although I did talk to one neighbor that said that they went over there and just took the bow by the horns and did some landscaping unauthorized because it was so completely out of control. There's an abandoned vehicle in the driveway that's been there for years. Nothing's, the city hasn't done anything. So if we already have these existing codes, why aren't we doing something? And then I'll, I'll just throw out another address. Actually, I don't know the address, but I know the street. Blackbird Roost. The, there was a mobile home, affordable housing. And the owner kicked out all of the residents. And I would think, Jesse, shake your head. Is that an eyesore? I got a yes. So my question is, will the existing code address Blackbird Roost? Will it address this address on Kutch? If it will, do we need more code enforcement? Do you kind of see where I'm going on this?
Yeah, I do.
I'll shut up and let you comment. Thank you.
No, I mean, this is really kind of at the heart of a lot of our conversations at the working group, right? And so there is this feeling that when folks don't see the condition changing, that the city isn't doing anything. So what I key in on is when I hear you say the city hasn't done anything about the Kutch property. We have done a lot to try to manage the Kutch property. We actually did a cleanup, I think it was in, it was either in 13 or 14. We actually did a property cleanup with the Health Department. I believe it was that house on Kutch. And it's back into its disrepair, right? I mean, it's been eight years since we've done that. But whether you have our current rules, whether you have an off-the-shelf property maintenance ordinance, at the end of the day, it's up to the property owner. You know, we can write tickets, we can assess fines. Those things get ignored all the time. And so one of the lessons I've learned is that our approach is to be the more, let's make contact with the owner. Let's try to understand the situation, give them a firm deadline to resolve it. If it's life safety, it's a very short deadline. But if somebody's an absentee owner and they're just not around, it doesn't matter what we have on the books, in my view, it's just going to be a challenge and it's going to feel like nothing's happening. Now, I've not explored what is the next step, right? I think we'd have to have this conversation with our city attorney. Could the city be more proactive on these abandoned properties? You know, there is a, there's a section in the code right now, it's this, it's the nuisance section. Nuisances 6-04. That section is all about abandoned buildings. And this is in our current code. And what it says is the fire chief and the city engineer, and I think the public works director, will go out and do a site inspection. They will prepare a report for the city council. There will be a public hearing. They will present the findings of the report. And the idea is, you know, if it's deemed to be really a hazardous building and it's public safety issue, I'm guessing there'd be some recommended action with it. So we have this process. We, we just haven't used it. And I can't really explain why we have or haven't. But, you know, that's a section where I think we could look at and explore improving on. You know, we have a list of probably 10 to 12 buildings that are what I call abandoned buildings and just habitually problematic. We play this game of trying to find someone to secure the building, right? Because people break in and do all kinds of bad things. The neighbors are fed up with it. We finally find someone, they come back, they board it up, the doors and the windows, and then it gets taken off again in a few more weeks. And this is that discussion about, should we go to the next step and say, your time of boarding up is over? It's been 180 days. Now you need to start putting in real doors and windows. And I think the reason that's in a code is the idea is you're going to make it livable again. And that somehow this is going to persuade the owner to bring the property back to life and put it back into use, right? But I think our discussions at the meeting were, well, if an owner's just going to not do it, they're, you know, changing the code probably isn't going to change that owner's view, who owns the property on Kutch, of what they should be doing. And so at the end of the day, I do feel like it comes down to having an owner who's willing to participate. If they're not willing, what can we do? To number one, eliminate what are really, number one should be the health and safety. If it's a hazardous condition, you know, we should take a closer look at what, what can we do? And so I do feel that's kind of a next step, is probably sitting down with the attorney, with the fire chief, the building official. You know, do our current codes allow us to go in and intervene in these kind of situations? What's going to be the, what's going to trigger action by the city? I think it would be some kind of a public meeting where you notify the owner, they can come and participate. I mean, that's in our code right now. And we can take action and then basically assess the property. That's what we did back in 13 or 14 when we cleaned up that Kutch property. We came in with one of the landscaping companies and cleared a lot of vegetation, removed garbage, and then we just assessed the bill. So it's on the, it's probably in the, recorded in the public records as a lien against the property, right? So if it ever sold, we potentially would get reimbursed for our cost. But those are tools we have now. We don't use them a lot.
Well, so in summary, I do support your recommended approach. But it needs some refinement. And as far as code compliance, I do support the idea of working with, you know, we're not out there to persecute people. We're out there to encourage them and help them clean up their property. However, at some point, I think we need to become more assertive. And I think those two addresses that I mentioned are probably, you know, it'd have to go through a process, obviously. But I mean, those look like there's a potential that they need some more intense city action.
Yeah, no, I agree. This is an area where I was hoping we'd make more progress on, actually.
Just look at the abandoned car. That should be a, a straightforward one. That should be a pretty easy one. You know, there's an abandoned car. I haven't checked, but I don't think it's registered. It's been there for a long time.
I know. I'm just laughing because the code, I think, allows you to have one abandoned vehicle. I think it is supposed to be out of the front setback.
Well, this one is right on the driveway.
Probably not in the driveway.
There's another one in the garage, which, you know, on this house, it has windows on the garage door. And you can look in, and the inside of the garage is a mess. And it has more vehicles than if I remember correctly.
So really, at the end of the day, it is about a non-responsive owner, I believe. And, yeah, what are our tools to maybe cure those situations? I, I think we do need to continue to work on that. I'd like to find a better solution to these abandoned properties that are really, they are a nuisance and a hazard to the neighborhood.
Well, we might need to revisit the nuisance regulations and streamline them a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Good discussion. Thank you for your thought on preparing the presentation and, and all the care you put into this. I'm wondering if you can tell me how Reggie and his team are keeping up with the current code? And with this, if we go, move forward with this, how would that impact Reggie? And can he keep up?
Yeah. And Reggie apologizes, he wanted to be here tonight, but he had another commitment. He had to leave at like 4:30. There's always enough work for Reggie and his team, right? There's no shortage of code compliance issues. And so we do hear a lot, this comment, you're not doing anything about it. Well, yeah, there are existing violations we haven't been able to resolve, but we've also resolved a whole lot of violations. I'm very proud of the monthly report we do. And so I think the answer is yes, there's always, there's plenty of work. It is kind of about choosing, picking and choosing what we want to focus on. We very much focus on life safety issues, so keeping sidewalks clear both in the winter and summer. Garbage issues are a priority because they lead to other issues, obviously, getting those cleaned up very quickly. And so that's kind of the focus. You know, we respond to everything we get a call on. The majority of our calls, our, our staff initiated. This was some direction we took a few years ago, was that we should be more proactive. And we've always been proactive. There's another belief that we only respond to complaints, which isn't, is not true. When we get a call about an issue in a neighborhood, we look at all the properties on that issue, right? You can't just go and talk to one neighbor about their garbage problem when the same problem exists two doors down, right? And so you kind of, again, it's about treating the neighborhood equally and making sure we're addressing it wherever we see it. And so I think we're very careful about that and thoughtful. Reggie has told me he does believe this will help. He believes this additional language will be useful because I think that's a legitimate question. If we're not really adding any new enforcement tools, does this really make a difference? I just think the new language, the way it's presented, is helpful. There's probably some terms in there we need to define. I don't know if I'm really answering your question, but again, there's no shortage of things for them to work on. You know, having the dark sky specialist is great because that used to be a challenge, you know? We didn't have time for dark sky enforcement because it's such a different type of enforcement. You've got to work some nights and other things. And so having that full-time person on that is wonderful. And it has allowed the other three positions, we have two other positions in Reggie, to focus on other things. So I think that's what he would tell you, is there's no shortage of things to work on, but they, he does feel this will be helpful.
That helps. You did answer my question. Thank you. So I am supportive of moving this forward with some refinements and also looking into, you know, how to better deal with the non-responsive owner. Would like to look into that more.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right.
I'm happy just to echo the sentiments that I've just heard from Councilmember McCarthy and Council Vice Mayor Sweet.
Go, Councilmember Soss.
First of all, I want to thank the, the working group and all the stakeholders and partners who have participated in so many ways in coming forward with some recommendations here. So in terms of your question, next steps, okay. I want to move forward with the new property care standards, relying on current code for compliance standards, and continue to review and improve current code. Also amplifying on your, your, the suggested, recommended approach or suggested approach? Because it has layers of messaging and the purpose in, in terms of amending the code to, to articulate the purpose and intent and the draft standards. Also going back to the, let me see, going back to the, the proposed approach. Sorry.
Yeah, do you want me to go back to that slide?
So I support every, every bullet item on this screen specifically in empowering neighbors and neighborhoods. Not only the League of Neighborhoods, but also other neighborhoods who don't have HOAs. Just kind of refreshing my memory, when the previous council put this forward as a, as a fair item, it was actually the, the request from, from the League of Neighborhoods to, for council to consider this because they need, they, the League needs a certain level of standards of care in a, you know, with the absence of an HOA enforcing. You know, with the absence of an HOA enforcing some rules and, you know, some others' rules, maybe even taken as very stiff. I mean, I have some friends who lives in neighborhoods with HOAs, you know, just the weeds and, you know? But I remember the... It's interesting, though, even with the survey, those are the usual concerns, you know? Trash, abandoned buildings, abandoned vehicles were the common issue. And I believe that also could persist in other neighborhoods that are not part of the league of neighborhoods. So I really am in full support in my official and personal capacity in creating a property care program. Again, this all boils down to equity and availability of resources first. The property care stands as total actually calls for increased capacity. Capacity for staff, team flag staff, for code compliance, and also engaging. Engaging the neighbors and neighborhoods and even businesses located in neighborhoods to be part of this property care program. You know, I'm kind of just thinking out loud here, some increasing terms of capacity building and mobilizing resources in activating this property care program. Also, there may be an area of collaboration and partnership with our police department to, let's say, activating a neighborhood watch slash property care, neighborhood property care. So it's kind of like being neighborly, as Mr. Dominguez is, being kind to your neighbor, being helpful to your neighbor, and we lift each other up. We help each other out. Thank you.
Thank you. So I am of similar mind as McCarthy and Councilmember McCarthy and Vice Mayor on this. Would like more information regarding the abandoned buildings. The one thing, though, is I have some concerns regarding the property care program and how this is going to be potentially violating the gift clause of the Arizona constitution, especially as, you know, so many people in our community the last two years have been impacted by flooding. They still have black mold in their home. And we've been saying all along, we can't use public tax dollars on private property. So I would need to need a lot more information on what legally we could potentially do there. But to me, at face value, I could also see that coming up with a bit of an uproar, given the circumstance the last two years about the one hundred and fourteen homes plus that were impacted by flooding the last two years and also how much money they've needed of tens upon hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair. And yet, we're doing somebody's landscaping for them. So anyways, that is one information I would like from the... Just as an additional analysis.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
But I am in support of moving forward with this. I think it clears up the language, especially if Reggie's in support of this, I think. And it's going to make his job a little easier, potentially, maybe, then I think this is certainly a benefit. Councilmember Shimonie has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Dan and Mark and team, thank you for your work on this and your presentation. And council, thank you for the discussion. Jesse, thank you for being with us and your public comments. Yeah, I support us moving forward with this as well. I do think that, you know, we can nudge and encourage people to be, you know, good members of a neighborhood, of a community. Jesse, to your point about seeing someone's mess from across the street, we can... You know, this helps Reggie with more tools. That's fine. But at the end of the day, I really don't want us to be acting like an HOA and coming in heavy-handed. Council, and I think that is, I think, understood by us as a council that we don't want to be heavy-handed with enforcement on this. That's not what I'm looking for us to do. So we can nudge and encourage people all day, but if they ultimately choose not to comply, I just want to make that clear that I don't think that this is going to necessarily solve that issue or that situation. Ultimately, it's their choice. They don't choose to live in an HOA, and I respect that. So I just want to tread lightly. I want to give Reggie and the team as many tools as we can to be successful with supportive neighborhoods, but I just want us to be careful not to be crossing that line and going down a slippery slope of overregulation and overgoverning. But it sounds like my colleagues feel the same way. And so just wanted to add my thoughts to the conversation and support for what staff is working on and us moving forward. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, and looking forward to seeing how this progresses and hoping that this is successful.
Well said, Councilmember Shimonie. I live in a non-HOA neighborhood for a reason. I'm certainly not going to want to put that on top of us who live in those locations. So, all right. With that, I think that's sufficient direction at this time?
Yeah, absolutely. We really appreciate the conversation tonight.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on this. Getting back to the agenda. All right. We are down to Gen item eleven, public participation. I'm not saying anything at this time. Down to Gen item twelve, informational items, too, from mayor, council, and city manager and future Gen item requests. We'll start with Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing from me tonight, especially with the acknowledgement that we made earlier of police officer suicide awareness. I wanted to let the community know that this Saturday is the Out of the Darkness Walk, starting at nine AM at Buffalo Park. And just reading from their site describing that event, it states that the Out of the Darkness Community Walk is a journey of remembrance, hope, and support. It unites our communities and provides an opportunity to acknowledge the ways in which suicide and mental health conditions have affected our lives and the lives of those we love and care about. So I just want to encourage those within the community to make efforts to get out. This is one of the first years... Personally, I won't be able to attend it, and it's very sad for me, but I hope that there's a really, really good turnout. I know a lot of organizations are planning to table and provide information and community resources, including NAMI Flag Staff, and just hope that folks can get that information and be part of that event. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Long meeting. Good meeting. But just a couple of things I just want to highlight there, that we do have a few things happening this upcoming week, retreats and such, but things I want to really highlight is just the meet and greet with our water services director finalist on Monday from three to five PM. And that on Tuesday, there is an Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration and roadmap to repair municipal action guide being put on, I think from the League of Cities, if I'm not mistaken. Our indigenous coordinator of Indigenous Initiatives, Rose Tohe, sent us all an email with an invitation to attend this event, and I am registered for it. So I am looking forward to being there and learning and seeing what they have to share with us. And then, yeah, I see that City Manager added that the Water Services Director candidates will be here in person for the meet and greet at City Hall. So looking forward to hearing about how that goes and hopefully joining that meet and greet myself. But thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. Good meeting today. Thank you, staff, and have a good night.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So let's see. This past Sunday, I was honored to speak at the Nineteenth Annual Sunnyside Celebration of Independence. The event honors the independence of people here and around the world. It was very cool. And then this Friday, I will be tagging along on the Coconino Plateau Watership Partnership Annual Field Trip. We're going to the Pinion Plain Mine, Lost Orphan Mine, Tucson Water Treatment Plant, and the Grand Canyon Water Reclamation Facility. And thank you to Councilmember Aslan for the invite.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last four hours or so, we've heard a lot of compliments of our staff. Just the last subject we had, we heard compliments of what a good job they're doing. And all through the evening, we heard a lot of good things. So I just want to thank Mr. Clifton and his staff for doing a good job for the city. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The staff works hard.
They do. What'd you say? They hardly work? You know I'm kidding.
Councilmember Aslan?
I want to mention worker bees. I think it was Jesse. I think it's more like worker elephants.
That's right.
I don't have anything to add except that I want to make sure that the agenda, the fair item that was put forth by the abortion protection access group... I don't want to put you on the spot, Greg. If you know when that's coming up, maybe you can just clarify it here in the open. Or if you need to get back to us on that, I'll look for an email from you.
Yeah. Can we get back to you? I was just checking in with our city clerk. You know, we pull out the working calendar every week, so I think this will be discussed in that context, and we'll report back when it's coming to you. We know it's urgent.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of urgency out there on the part of the petitioners. Just wanted to give some voice to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCarthy, did you have...
Yes, and I think we need to have an executive session on that subject also.
Yep. Thank you. And Councilmember Salas?
Thank you. Just a friendly nudge. As we embark on another budget season, I'd like to hear from the city manager on the status of previous council direction of my fair items that received council support and budgeted this year. The business one-stop-shop business service and our workforce development, as well as the cost recovery policy. Not in a hurry, just hopefully we'll get an update pretty soon.
We'll give you an update.
When time allows.
Yeah. Thank you for the nudge.
Because I know staff has been busy on other matters that have been in the forefront of their time and attention. Also, just for everyone's information, you know, I may have alluded many times that, you know, that I serve the community as a board member of the Arizona Ad War, Coconino Workforce Board, representing small business. We do have city staff who serves on board representing the team flag staff and city organization, Mr. John Salton-Saul, who's actually the vice chair of the board. But the board had a meeting last week, and I shared some of the information earlier about grants opportunities with growing with Google and scholarships for potential students who want to take advantage of the scholarship for Google Certificates Program intended for the underserved, underrepresented, and economically disadvantaged members of our community, Coconino County, Coconin Countywide. I'm also part of the Workforce Board Committee on... This has evolved. It used to be Excellence in Workforce Development. Now it's called Work-Based Learning Committee, which is focused on working with employers and businesses in driving training that are needed by the many sectors we have. So this will include, you know, on-the-job training, internship, apprenticeship. But Work-Based Learning is a new committee with the Workforce Board, and I'm happy to serve on that committee as well. And I take this opportunity to greet Mr. Austin Aslan. A belated happy birthday.
All right. Well, thank you for the discussion tonight, everyone, and look forward to Thursday's budget retreat. We'll hang out and talk a lot and maybe eat some tacos. I think that's what's for lunch. I'll have to check. Yep, Stacy's smiling, so... All right, I'll see you then. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.